Let me call first for recognition Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and with Councilmember Antonio Villarosa, who I know is with some of our advocates and representatives of the Armenian community. I'd like to invite the Armenian community, Armenian-American community to come forward to join us this morning. Colleagues, each year we have the solemn responsibility and task of recognizing one of the great injustices in human history: the Armenian genocide, a time in which too many souls were taken from this earth because of human action. Upstairs, we had many council members who joined Mr. Villarosa and myself, Mr. Zain, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Parks, Mr. Padilla. We all were up there to recognize again the importance of each year pointing out not only what happened during the Armenian genocide, but that there are still those that would deny that it had happened. The number of Armenians who perished culminating in 1915 in what's known as the first genocide of the 20th century, unfortunately not the last, became unfortunately the prototype of modern killing, in which the murder of hundreds of Armenian intellectuals and political, religious, and business leaders began on April 24, 1915, and this was just unfortunately a prelude of what was to come. The Turkish government at the time decided that by going after the intellectuals, the bravest and the strongest, that they could somehow cut the heart out of the community and then go after the rest of it. There was a murder in the end of more than one and a half million Armenians from death marches, killings, rapes, and massacres, and the forced exile of more than 500,000 innocent people. Perhaps the greatest tragedy was the loss of the, of much of, most of the traditional Armenian homeland, which for centuries, indeed millennia, had stood as the heartland of that community. When we hear the phrase "never again," and that was uttered after this first genocide, unfortunately Adolf Hitler himself said "who after all speaks today of the annihilation of the Armenians" when he prepared for his massacre of Jews and homosexuals and people who were unacceptable to the Third Reich. And unfortunately, for too long, what we have had, unlike in the government in Germany, which acknowledged what happened there, the government of Turkey still refuses to acknowledge what happened. I mentioned upstairs that there are hopeful moments in this past year, hopeful moments not only because we have a community strong and united here together to speak out on the genocide, but also because we now have voices that are recognizing it. Just yesterday was a wonderful day for every Armenian around the world, and for Canadian Armenians especially, because after 89 years of neglect, the Canadian Parliament finally recognized the Armenian genocide as a historical fact, something we are struggling to do here too. The New York Times this year changed its policy on the Armenian genocide, and let me read you the new policy. It says, "After careful study of scholarly definitions of genocide, we have decided to accept the term in reference to the Turks' mass destruction of Armenians in and around 1915." The guidelines continue, "The expression 'Armenian genocide' may be used freely and should not be qualified with phrasings like what Armenians call, etc." The New York Times guidelines state that "by most historical accounts, the deportation aimed at eliminating the Armenian population throughout what is now Turkey. While we may of course report Turkish denials on those occasions when they are relevant, we should not couple them with the historians' findings as if they had equal weight." And here in Los Angeles, the Museum of Tolerance, where we didn't have an exhibition on the Armenian genocide, a recognition, the willingness of the Museum of Tolerance directors to do so is another landmark, one that was led and resulted from students here locally who pushed for that to happen. With that, I will close and hand it over to my colleague, somebody who has been a great defender of the Armenian community and somebody who has shone the light on the genocide, making sure that we never forget what's happened, Antonio Villarosa, but I do want to repeat something that I said upstairs, which is, we marked the 10-year anniversary of the Rwandan genocide recently, in which we went through that history and after the traumatic experiences in Armenia and in Germany and throughout the Third Reich, we said and said again, "never again," and yet, just a decade ago, when we knew that there was a genocide happening, our own government refused to say the words genocide because it might impel us to action, legally we would be compelled to do so. What frightens us colleagues about genocide is that we stare into our own hearts when we recognize that it happens. Genocide is not an otherworldly occurrence, it is a human occurrence, and we must be reminded that both the good that has come out of this and the survival of the Armenian people is mirrored by that same bad and that evil that is in human hearts, and we must aspire to never letting that come out again. Mr. Villarosa.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I'd like to bring up all of the members of the Armenian National Committee and all of the people who were with us earlier today at a reception. I authored this resolution on behalf of the City of Los Angeles with Eric Garcetti, as I've done now for nearly a decade. It was 1994 when I first met many of the members of the Armenian National Committee who are here with us today. I remember talking to them about the issues important to them, and the issue first and foremost on their agenda was the issue of the Armenian genocide. And as I said earlier today at a reception, I'll be honest, I didn't know a great deal about the Armenian genocide back then. Shame on me, but more importantly, shame on our public education system. Shame on the world for closing our eyes to what happened at the beginning of the century. Many of you know that the 20th century is known as the most brutal genocidal century in the history of humankind. Many of you know that that first act of brutality against the people began in the Ottoman Empire against the Armenian people. Many of you know that the world was silent back then, and unfortunately, over a hundred year period, the world has continued to be silent. We are here today, neither Eric nor myself nor any of us who have signed on to this resolution are Armenians by nationality, but we're here today to say that in our souls we feel the terror, but also the hope that the Armenian people feel about this issue. Because we're here today when the world has still closed its eyes and refused to listen its ears and refused to listen and acknowledge what happened at the beginning of this century. We're here to say that this city, this city where we come from every corner of the earth with one of the largest Armenian populations anywhere outside of Armenia, we're here to say that this city stands up and acknowledges that there was an Armenian genocide and expects that our national government to do the same. We're here today because we know that when you don't acknowledge, when you fail to acknowledge what happened, you can never ever learn from what happened. And so today, we remember, we remember much as the Jews and the world has remembered Yom HaShoah, the day of remembrance of what happened in the Holocaust. We remember for the Serbs and the Croats who were killed in the act of genocide. We remember for the Rwandans who just 10 years ago, just 10 years ago, were massacred and brutally terrorized and victims of genocide while the world stood still and said nothing. And so today, the City of Los Angeles acknowledges the Armenian genocide. Today, we stand up and say that we need to educate our children, not just the children of Armenian extraction, but all of the children. Every one of our children should know what happened to the Armenians. Every one of our children should learn from what happened then, and we say to our government that only with acknowledging with what happened during the Armenian genocide can we ever hope to learn, to grow, to heal, to create the hope that's so important. And so, on behalf of the City Council, my colleague Eric Garcetti and all of you, every one of you who knows full well what hate and brutality can do, I would like to call up Rafi Hamperian, the Chairman of the ANC, present you along with my colleague this resolution on the Armenian genocide. It chronicles what happened to the nearly 2 million Armenians who were exterminated, who were brutalized, who were lost. On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, we present you with this resolution against the Armenian genocide, but more importantly, for hope for the future.
The Turkish government at the time decided that by going after the intellectuals, the bravest and the strongest, that they could somehow cut the heart out of the community and then go after the rest of it. There was murder in the end of more than one and a half million Armenians from death marches, killings, rapes and massacres, and the forced exile of more than 500,000 innocent people. Perhaps the greatest tragedy was the loss of the, of much of, most of, the traditional Armenian homeland which for centuries, indeed millennia, had stood as the heartland of that community. When we hear the phrase “never again,” and that was uttered after this first genocide, unfortunately Adolf Hitler himself said “who after all speaks today of the annihilation of the Armenians,” when he prepared for his massacre of Jews and homosexuals and people who were unacceptable to the Third Reich. And unfortunately, for too long, what we have had, unlike in the government in Germany which acknowledged what happened there, the government of Turkey still refuses to acknowledge what happened. I mentioned upstairs that there are hopeful moments in this past year. Hopeful moments not only because we have a community, strong and united, here together to speak out on the genocide, but also because we now have voices that are recognizing it. Just yesterday was a wonderful day for every Armenian around the world, and for Canadian Armenians especially, because after 89 years of neglect, the Canadian Parliament finally recognized the Armenian genocide as a historical fact, something we are struggling to do here too. The New York Times this year changed its policy on the Armenian genocide. Let me read you the new policy. It says, “After careful study of scholarly definitions of genocide, we have decided to accept the term in reference to the Turks’s mass destruction of Armenians in and around 1915.” The guidelines continue, “The expression Armenian genocide may be used freely and should not be qualified with phrasings like what Armenians call, etc. The New York Times guidelines state that by most historical accounts, the deportation aimed at eliminating the Armenian population throughout what is now Turkey. While we may of course report Turkish denials on those occasions when they are relevant, we should not couple them with the historians’ findings, as if they had equal weight.” And here in Los Angeles, the Museum of Tolerance where we didn’t have an exhibition on Armenian genocide, a recognition, the willingness of the Museum of Tolerance directors to do so is another landmark, one that was led and resulted from students here locally who pushed for that to happen. With that, I will close and hand it over to my colleague, somebody who has been a great defender of the Armenian community and somebody who has shone the light on the genocide, making sure that we never forget that’s happened, Antonio Villarogosa. But I do want to repeat something that I said upstairs, which is, we marked the 10-year anniversary of the Rwandan genocide recently, in which we went through that history and after the traumatic experiences in Armenia and in Germany and throughout the Third Reich, we said and said again, “never again,” and yet, just a decade ago, when we knew that there was a genocide happening, our own government refused to say the words genocide because it might impel us to action. Legally, we would be compelled to do so. What frightens us colleagues about genocide is that we stare into our own hearts when we recognize that it happens. Genocide is not an otherworldly occurrence, it is a human occurrence. And we must be reminded that both the good that has come out of this and the survival of the Armenian people is mirrored by that same bad and that evil that is in human hearts. And we must aspire to never letting that come out again. Mr. Villarogosa.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I’d like to bring up all of the members of the Armenian National Committee and all of the people who were with us earlier today at a reception. I authored this resolution on behalf of the City of Los Angeles with Eric Garcetti, as I’ve done now for nearly a decade. It was 1994 when I first met many of the members of the Armenian National Committee who are here with us today. I remember talking to them about the issues important to them. And the issue first and foremost on their agenda was the issue of the Armenian genocide. And as I said earlier today at a reception, I’ll be honest, I didn’t know a great deal about the Armenian genocide back then. Shame on me, but more importantly, shame on our public education system. Shame on the world for closing our eyes to what happened at the beginning of the century. Many of you know that the 20th century is known as the most brutal, genocidal century in the history of humankind. Many of you know that that first act of brutality against the people began in the Ottoman Empire against the Armenian people. Many of you know that the world was silent back then. And unfortunately, over a hundred-year period, the world has continued to be silent. We are here today, neither Eric nor myself nor any of us who have signed on to this resolution are Armenians by nationality, but we’re here today to say that in our souls we feel the terror, but also the hope that the Armenian people feel about this issue. Because we’re here today when the world has still closed its eyes and refused to listen, its ears, and refused to listen and acknowledge what happened at the beginning of this century. We’re here to say that this city, this city where we come from every corner of the earth, with one of the largest Armenian populations anywhere outside of Armenia, we’re here to say that this city stands up and acknowledges that there was an Armenian genocide and expects that our national government to do the same. We’re here today because we know that when you don’t acknowledge, when you fail to acknowledge what happened, you can never, ever learn from what happened. And so today, we remember. We remember much as the Jews and the world has remembered Yom HaShoa, the day of remembrance of what happened in the Holocaust. We remember for the Serbs and the Croats who were killed in the act of genocide. We remember for the Rwandans who just 10 years ago, just 10 years ago, were massacred and brutally terrorized and victims of genocide while the world stood still and said nothing. And so today, the City of Los Angeles acknowledges the Armenian genocide. Today, we stand up and say that we need to educate our children, not just the children of Armenian extraction, but all of the children. Every one of our children should know what happened to the Armenians. Every one of our children should learn from what happened then. And we say to our government that only with acknowledging with what happened during the Armenian genocide can we ever hope to learn, to grow, to heal, to create the hope that’s so important. And so, on behalf of the City Council, my colleague Eric Garcetti and all of you, every one of you who knows full well what hate and brutality can do, I would like to call up Rafi Hamperian, the Chairman of the ANC, present you along with my colleague this resolution on the Armenian genocide. It chronicles what happened to the nearly 2 million Armenians who were exterminated, who were brutalized, who were lost. On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I present you with this resolution against the Armenian genocide, but more importantly, for hope for the future.
Thank you, Councilman Villarogosa. Thank you, Councilman Garcetti, for sponsoring this resolution, and thanks also to the members of the City Council for unanimously passing this measure. I want to, on behalf of the Armenian National Committee and the assembled organizations behind me, the Armenian Relief Society, the Homenit Men, the Hamaskyn, the Armenian Youth Federation, the Alikpilivos School, the Armenian Bar Association, a number of Armenian American civic organizations, express our gratitude to the City Council for taking a position on this very important human rights issue. There needs to be a great degree of persistence when it comes to genocide recognition and fighting the persistent prospect of genocide denial. The United States Congress is on record on the prevention and punishment of genocide for only one reason. There’s a senator from the Midwest, William Proxmire, who came to the floor one day and said, “Why hasn’t the United States Senate ratified the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Genocide?” That senator gave one speech on the subject and exhorted his colleagues to support that measure. He gave two speeches, he gave five speeches, and still, none of his colleagues in the U.S. Senate listened. He gave 10 speeches and he gave 10, 10 more. And then he gave 20, and then he gave 100 speeches. And then he gave 100 speeches, more than that. After 200 speeches, the U.S. Senate failed to accept and adopt the U.N. Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Genocide. He gave 500 speeches. Members of the City Council, he gave 1,000 speeches. After 3,000 speeches, in 1987, after 3,000 speeches, a speech given continuously, one a day for 10 years, the United States Senate adopted the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Genocide. The power of one voice and the power of persistence. That’s the persistence this body will need to exercise, this nation will need to exercise, and this world will need to exercise if ever again we are to utter the words “never again” and really mean it. Never again means never again, and we have to fight to make that a reality. So on behalf of the Armenian National Committee, I thank Councilman Garcetti, I thank Councilman Villarogosa, and I thank each and every member of this City Council for passage of this meaningful human rights resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have some other council members who would like to give you recognition. Let me recognize Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Ms. Misakowski. And Rafi, we wanted to make sure, and I know there are other members here who want to stand in solidarity with Councilmember Garcetti and Councilmember Villarogosa in acknowledging the genocide and using our voice. As you said, one voice can make a tremendous difference. And what you have today is going to be 15 voices that will use this bully pulpit, and I talked about it this morning at the reception, to say “never again,” to remind people that this was a tragedy that did happen, and that we have to always look back at the past in our history and learn from that, and make sure that everyone recognizes the atrocities that occurred. And as someone who represents a large number of Armenians in the North Hollywood and Tahunga area, I know that my constituents and others want to make sure that the City Council goes on record today. And I want to thank you and all the leaders that are standing with you today, because you’ve never given up. You have never given up to say, “It will be recognized, we will continue to fight,” and it will be every day and every month and every year until the world acknowledges that this occurred and happened. And you didn’t need to come here 3,000 times or have 3,000 speeches. This council gets it, and we are going to be supportive and just wanted to stand here as well in commemorating and acknowledging the genocide that occurred in our Armenian community and its impact. And we will continue to use our voices to support your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I too joined with my colleagues, and I was with you this morning up at the Tom Bradley Room, comments regarding this, the remembrance, remembering the tragedy, as you stated, so it will never happen again. Last week, many of us were at Pan Pacific Park on the Holocaust, the Holocaust Memorial. And today, we recognize another atrocity that occurred to society. And our hearts go out to the families, our prayers go out to the families. And in my district, AGB Umenugian School, which is a school very close and dear to my heart, many, many residents of the third district, many residents of the San Fernando Valley send their children to that school, and they remember, and they remember every day. They remember the freedoms and liberties we have here, and they remember their ancestors and the struggles and the sacrifices they all went through. So my heart goes out to you. We stand united with you, and we hopefully someday in this world of ours can eliminate atrocities and people can live, love, peace and harmony. God bless you all, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
I want to stand here once again, as we have, as my former colleague in the legislature, Antonio Villarogosa, and myself stood with you as well in the state legislature, recognizing the genocide of the Armenian people. And we say it so simply, but the fact of the matter is, there are still people on this earth today who refuse to recognize that fact, that atrocious fact that should have never occurred. And I think it’s very important that we all understand that this isn’t just a ceremony, this is reality. This is something that we’re trying to make sure that the true history books reflect the truth. And in this country, I thank God that we are in fact recognizing this and other atrocities that have gone on around the world. And we’re not a perfect country, and we’ve had our own issues that we’ve had to reckon with in our country. And I think the truth, as it said, shall set you free. The truth shall set us as human beings free, should we recognize the atrocities that should have never occurred and recognize that we should all treat each other as equals, and we should never, ever have ethnic cleansing. We should never, ever treat another human being or another community as such as less than we are. That should never happen. Unfortunately, this did happen, and unfortunately, without presentations like this, some people may never realize that this occurred. And unfortunately, some people to this day, even after they are reassured that they should recognize that this occurred, they refuse to do so. So these presentations are very important, whether it be in the state legislature or here in the City Council, and hopefully that we have this presentation in our capital of this great nation as often as we can to make sure that we recognize that we are a country that is just and a country that recognizes both what is good and bad, and we’re willing to admit to what history really is about. So congratulations for coming forth with this, Eric Garcetti and Antonio Villarogosa, for making sure that we as a city recognize this appropriately and recognize that this did occur and we cannot deny it.
Councilmember Labange.
Thank you very much. As again, it’s good to see everybody again. But what’s more important, gentlemen, if you move over, is the youth, because what I do appreciate about remembering the genocide, the Armenian genocide, is the youth involvement. Just the other night, I was coming home late from a community meeting, and several hundred young people were marching down Hollywood Boulevard. And the youth to remember what happens from the elders of a tragedy of the past is so important. To remember our history, to not remember a history, to not forget history, is so important. So I just thank you, Eric, for bringing these young people up, because it’s your generation that’s going to continue the fight to make people sure that one day this be recognized as a terrible part of the world’s history. Thank all of you for your participation in this day. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank Eric Garcetti and Mr. Villarogosa for putting on that event this morning, and certainly want to add my voice to this important issue. And as I stated earlier at the reception, there are so many things that bind us together from different communities, and the fact that, as we’ve just celebrated the Black History Month, and think about the millions of people that died during the slavery, we think about the issue of the Holocaust, and what was interesting there was 6 million people. But what was more interesting, that when it was quoted, that 55 million people lost their lives during the war primarily because of that issue. And then we come here today and talk about 1.5 million Armenians that have lost their lives. The unique issue is, so many people won’t acknowledge it, where on the other issues is fairly well documented that, and people accept that it occurred. And so I would just like to reiterate the one point I made earlier, is that we honor those who have left, but we also need to ensure that we celebrate you that continue the legacy until you correct all that is wrong. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, Mr. Villarogosa, Mr. Garcetti, for this incredible recognition.
You’re welcome. I would like to end with a poem that we read earlier today, because today we not only acknowledge the pain, but also the hope, by William Zaroyan. “I should like to see any power of the world destroy this race, this small tribe of unimportant people, whose wars have all been fought and lost, whose structures have crumbled. Literature is unread, music is unheard, and prayers are no more answered. Go ahead, destroy Armenia. See if you can do it. Send them to the desert without bread or water. Burn their homes and churches. Then see if they will not laugh, sing, and pray again. For when two of them meet anywhere in the world, see if they will not create a new Armenia.” Thank you all so much.
One last brief statement. We also, there’ll be two commemorations of March through Little Armenia Youth March tomorrow morning, which folks can come to Hobart, I believe, and Sunset, and come to. And then at 1:00 PM in Montebello’s Bignell Park, there will be the annual commemoration there, Flame of Remembrance, and we invite people to join us there. I’d like to also thank Lynetta Merian, Arsene Malikiyan, and especially Bites Artzmasian and my staff for their help with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, for our next presentation, I’m going to recognize Councilmember Ludlow, who is going to make a presentation. I understand we have a number of judges in the audience as well, so we’re letting Mr. Ludlow jump ahead on that so the judges can get back to their courtrooms.
Madam President, thank you. And colleagues, I assure you that I will be very brief, but try to do dignity to this presentation. If Richard Wong could come forward, please. Colleagues, we are joined here today by a number of Superior Court Judges and judges throughout L.A. who need to get back to the bench as cases are waiting on their arrival. And they are here out of respect today as we celebrate 40 years of service to the City of Los Angeles by Richard Wong. And I want to just say a few things here, colleagues, about this tremendous individual. In 1963, Dick Wong was the first Asian Pacific Islander to be assigned by the Methodist Church of the Arizona-California Conference, and for seven years served in the congregations at Torrance, Casa Grande, and Brea Methodist Church as a Methodist minister. He dutifully served the citizens of Los Angeles as a social worker by becoming the first Asian Pacific Islander to head a social service agency, the Assistance League of Southern California Family Service, establishing the Hollywood Multipurpose Senior Citizen Center and co-founding the Western Region Asian Pacific Program, a service agency that was the first to serve exclusively the needs of Asian Pacific Islanders, and is now the largest agency of its kind in the Western United States. He practiced family law at Glessman &amp; Dolan for four years after law school, and was conscientiously serving the City of Los Angeles as a prosecutor with the Los Angeles City Attorney’s Office since 1987. While Deputy City Attorney, Dick Wong distinguished himself as a trial attorney handling DUI cases at the Metropolitan Courthouse on Hill Street, as a master calendar deputy at the Criminal Courts Building on Temple Street, and as a principal agency deputy at the Central Arrangement Courthouse on Boucher Street. He’s also established the L.A. City Attorney’s Office Bandit Taxi Enforcement Program with the Department of Transportation, developed the Department of Building and Safety’s earthquake retrofit enforcement policy, and has been the office’s principal advocate for the Fire Department’s heightened enforcement of overcrowded cases. It is a real honor today to present to you all an individual that has given 40 years of service to this city, and as a fellow, as a preacher’s kid of a Methodist minister, it is particularly honorable and exciting to present this resolution on behalf of the entire City of Los Angeles to the Honorable Richard Wong. Thank you for so much of your service.
Oh, I’m sorry. All right, Mr. Wong, would you like to say a few words?
I’m humbled to be on the same agenda on a day when we’re asked to remember the genocide of Armenians. Like many of you in this room, I am a public servant, and it is nice to be honored to be a public servant. Allow me to do one last public service, and that is that I have been one who has been advocating that we have safety in overcrowded conditions. We all go to places of assemblies and we’re told, “Don’t take pictures because you may hurt the actor.” We’re told not to open up our candy wrappers or to have our cellphones on because it would disturb our neighbors. I’m asking City Council if they would consider requesting all places of assemblies to make a further announcement to have people look and see where they are and where the exits are. Possibly, just possibly, if that announcement was made in Rhode Island, we would not have had 100 deaths. I request that. Thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you, Mr. Wong, and congratulations on your years of service.
And I just wanted to say a special thank you to Councilmember Cardenas for allowing us to move this presentation forward. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow. Let me now recognize Councilmember Cardenas for a presentation.
Members of the council and the community of Los Angeles, it gives me great honor and pleasure to introduce to all of you David Josephson. Let me tell you a little bit about why it’s so important that we recognize this wonderful individual. In today’s climate, it’s essential that businesses compete in the global marketplaces. They look to expand in their opportunities and markets. To this, however, does not require risks. It is here where the work that Mr. David Josephson does becomes so important to L.A.'s businesses. Mr. Josephson, Western Regional Director of the Export-Import Bank of the United States, has been serving Los Angeles businesses for many years. The Export-Import Bank supports the financing of U.S. goods and services, turning export opportunities into real transactions, maintaining and creating more U.S. jobs. Basically, they assume credit and country risk, the private sector which is unable or unwilling to accept. In California, the Export Bank supported 807 companies and financed a total of $9.4 billion in exports during the last five years. In particular, the value of exports supported in 2004 equaled $1.7 billion. Undoubtedly, the X-I-M Bank financing has contributed to the success of many local businesses. There are 45 businesses here in Los Angeles that have direct support from this bank. As a director of the bank, Mr. Josephson has gone out of his way to ensure that L.A., our Los Angeles businesses, find out about the opportunities that this government agency provides. Mr. Josephson has had an extensive career with the global marketplace, starting as a consultant to the technology venture capitalists and the director of ARBI Transitional, Inc., a Brazilian transportation holding company. Mr. Josephson holds an MA in Foreign Trade from the American Graduate School of International Management and a BS in Engineering from the United States Naval Academy at Annapolis. I thought it was important that all of us in Los Angeles get an opportunity to appreciate this wonderful person who has actually dedicated his life to making sure that our Angelinos have jobs and that we are competing in the global marketplace, that everyone recognizes it is becoming more and more the marketplace of every business and every business has to contend with. But today is a much more special day for Mr. Josephson because it’s his birthday. So help me in welcoming him and saying happy birthday to Mr. Josephson. Happy birthday.
Well, I’d like to thank the council and the City of Los Angeles. This is quite a surprise, and so you can imagine I have no prepared remarks, but I’ll just say that the Export-Import Bank of the United States is about jobs, and we serve the city and the country. And I am only one of a long line of export-import bankers since 1934, because this agency has been continuously approved for reauthorization in the Congress every four years since that time. And we’ve really come full circle because our first office in Los Angeles was actually in the mayor’s office at a spare desk and telephone in the early 90s, I believe it was, under Mayor Bradley. So we’ve now come full circle, and I’m very grateful to the mayor and to his director of inter- of International Trade, Eloisa Clementic, because we have now a formal partnership with the city where the city, through its resources and knowledge of companies, will bring more companies to the agency, the Export-Import Bank, for the products that we have, which really enhance the financing of exports. And as I say, exports mean jobs. So again, I'm very, very honored, and I feel very privileged for this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Having been a former business owner myself, I know how important it is for small businesses who want to go from two employees to 10 employees to 20 employees and on further. You can't do it without formal financing from banks like this. So I want to thank you very much for assisting the employment of thousands of people here in Los Angeles so that they can feed their families. This is something that is truly a treasure that we certainly should recognize, and we want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Members, before we continue with the presentations, I would like to call, have the clerk call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Masakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villagosa, Wyssine, Padilla, 15 members present and a quorum. Madam President.
Run through the agenda to see what items we might call for special discussion, those items that we can act on.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves. Ms. Perry seconds. Minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved.
On the regular agenda, item one is an item noted for public hearing. Council should close the hearing and confirm the assessments.
Let me open the public hearing, indicate there are no cards for speakers, so we will close the public hearing. The matter is before us to confirm the assessments. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved.
Item two is a street lighting district item in Council District 15. Council should deny the protest and confirm the assessments.
Is there anyone wishing to speak? Councilmember Han.
I'd like to request that we continue this item until May 25th.
Is there any objection to continuing item two until May 25th? Seeing none, that will be the order.
Items three through eight are also items noted for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and ordinances to May 14th.
Is there any objection to the recommendation to continue? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved.
Items nine through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 13, a motion is required inasmuch as there are two reports on file, and the recommendations do differ.
All right, we have no cards on those items, so we will, no need to have a public hearing on them. Any specials, members, nine through 13? And does someone, we need a motion on item 13 between the two motions. Mr. Zine? Mr. Zine calls 13 special. Any other items called special? If not, open the roll on nine through 12. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items 14 through 31 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. For clarification on item 14, it is the municipal code that is being amended, not the administrative code. And on item 28, an amending motion has been distributed to all members.
All right, we have cards on 14, so we will call that special. There are no cards on the other items, so I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing on 15 through 31. Members, are there any specials? Items 15 through 31, including the amendment on 28. Ms. Perry, did you have a? All right. Again, any specials, 15 through 31? 20, wait, we have the amendment. All right, open the roll on those items and 28 as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved.
On the continuation agenda, item 32 is an item for which public hearing has not been held.
There are no cards on that, so the public hearing is open and closed. Item 32 is before us. Mr. Parks, did you have?
We have a technical amendment for number 32. In both the Environmental Committee and Budget and Finance, it was requested that the initial $200,000 be allocated, but that there be no other allocation unless it comes back through committee.
Right, that's a level, a threshold. So with that amendment that it was discussed yesterday, that matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That matter is approved.
Madam President, forthwith on number 29, 29, please.
Item 29 is sent forthwith per Mr. Labange's request. All right, I believe at this point we can return back to the presentations, and let me recognize Councilmember Han. Oh, Mr. Ludlow?
Madam President, as Councilmember Han is going to the podium, just wanted to acknowledge today is the last day here in city chambers for my legislative deputy, Fabiola Vilches. Just want to thank her for all of her service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti? Can we turn Mr. Garcetti's microphone on?
I too want to congratulate Fabiola Vilches, who's also a CD-13 alum. City Hall and city life has been made all the richer for everything that you have done. I want to wish you best wishes. I know we're going to continue to be able to work together in the areas that I represent, but you've been an extraordinary star here in Los Angeles, and congratulations.
All right, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'm very pleased to be here today to recognize the fourth anniversary of the South Bay Latino Chamber of Commerce. Over four years ago, my good friend, the founder and the president of this Chamber of Commerce, came to see me and said that there were close to, there were Latino businesses in the LA area that were bringing $16 billion in revenue to our economy and employing more than 150,000 people. And yet, he felt like it was a niche in our economy that was not being represented, that was not being inspired, that was not being encouraged, that was not being promoted, and that had no one that was really advocating on their behalf to help them emerge as a growing influence in our economy. And he wondered whether or not I could help him start the Latino, the South Bay Latino Chamber of Commerce. At the time, I was an employee at Southern California Edison, and I immediately saw that there was a need, that it was a great vision, and I wanted to do everything I could to help him start. I was able to get him some initial funding from Southern California Edison. He promptly appointed me as one of the first founding board members. We offered up our office space for initial meetings, and since then, this organization has grown. It has been recognized. It has been able to advocate for Latino businesses in and around the Los Angeles region. Particularly of importance, as will be shown by their awards tomorrow night, Candy Sines was able to make a relationship with the very powerful Port of Los Angeles and able to help Latino businesses in this area get connected to the international trade industry. And for that, he will actually be awarding tomorrow night at his awards ceremony, the Port of Los Angeles will be awarded as the Agency of the Year. Margaret Hernandez and Julie Witchman Huerta will be honored as Board Members of the Year. Assemblyman Marco Firebaugh as Legislator of the Year. And our friend, Harbor Commissioner James Acevedo, will receive the Special Recognition Award for his support of increased businesses' opportunities for Latinos here in the Port of Los Angeles. I am very pleased to make this presentation this morning. Candy is my friend. Candy had the vision, and you should be very proud of yourselves in what you've been able to accomplish in terms of promoting, advocating, inspiring, and encouraging this special niche of businesses in our local economy. Also, Sherry Lopez is here today. Sherry, are you a board member? You're a board member. Sherry is a good businesswoman, lives in San Pedro, has been very involved in many things we've been doing here in the city of Los Angeles. Just another great example of a smart woman, businessperson, who has been able to also help to inspire and advocate for other Latino businesses. Candy, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Councilwoman Janice Han, Mr. Honorable President, members of the City Council. On behalf of the Board of Directors, members, corporate partners, friends of the South Bay Latino Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you for honoring us with this resolution and an extended invitation to each of you to join us this Saturday, April 24th, as we celebrate our fourth year at the Proud Bar Restaurant in Los Angeles. Our mission is simple, to promote, inspire, educate, and advocate on behalf of the many qualified Latino businesses located within the Los Angeles area and particularly in the South Bay region. Our goals have been somewhat difficult to achieve. It is not enough to be asked to the table if we're not invited to eat. Therefore, with your support, we shall continue our work on behalf of all of our members, and hopefully, one day, we could all share dessert. Again, I thank you, Honorable Councilwoman Janice Han, City Council members, and the Honorable City Council President Alex Padilla, for honoring the South Bay Latino Chamber of Commerce this morning. We're all humbled by this recognition, and thank you for recognizing our commitment to our members and the city contracting community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to introduce another one of our founding board members, Pamela Corante. At that time, she was with SBC Peck Bell. Without Janice and Pamela, I would not be standing here before you today and receiving this award. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the other board members like to say anything? Like to say anything?
Janice, I just want to commend you for your vision and your support of this organization. As you have seen, it's grown tremendously, and without your support and continued support, we wouldn't be here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. As a Board Member of the Year.
Thank you. Janice, again, thank you for this honor. The Port of Los Angeles has been given a mandate in order to encourage overlooked businesses to do business with the Port of Los Angeles. To that end, we found out that what we could give these people was access and information. So our partnerships with organizations like the South Bay Latino Chamber of Commerce are very, very important. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sherry?
I'd like to thank all of you for recognizing our chamber and understanding that our chamber exemplifies what small business is all about. And I also like to thank the mayor and Janice Han personally for appointing me to the small business committees and breaking up mega contracts and the insurance bond requirements specifically. But more importantly, I hope all of you recognize that the small businesses of the city of Los Angeles and what the South Bay Latino Chamber of Commerce is trying to do is to bring us to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I forgot to give you what we came here for. So on behalf of the entire City Council, I'd like to present to you this beautiful resolution commemorating the fourth year, fourth successful year, of the South Bay Latino Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations, Candy.
So do you have another?
I have another presentation on Extreme Makeover, but I think we're waiting for the star of the show, Sweet Alice, to get here, and I don't think she's here yet. So if you'll indulge me, we'll wait till she gets here, and I'll give that presentation.
All right, then let me at this time recognize Councilmember Villagosa. Is Councilmember Villagosa here?
Every once in a while, you get an incredible honor to introduce a legend to this great city. And I have the opportunity to welcome the international acting and singing sensation, Mexico's queen, the one and only Lucero. To most of you, Lucero is no stranger. She conquered our hearts when she was just a young girl. Lucero's acting career began when she was just 10 years old, when Televisa offered her the opportunity of trying out for a new juvenile program called Alegría, Alegrías de Mediodía. In 1982, Lucero had her first television appearance as a lead actress in Chispita. In 1982, due to Lucero's great acceptance by the Mexican audience, she began her singing career and recorded her first album title, Te Prometo. Lucero is mostly known for her songs such as Electricidad, Vete Con Ella, Tacticas de Guerra, Cuéntame, y Llorar. Llorar means to cry, and as you can all see, she's made a few people cry in her life. Since then, Lucero has continued to conquer our hearts. She's become the youngest and most consistent singer and actress, not only in Mexico, but in Latin America, and indeed, the Spanish-speaking world. She reaffirms herself both as a singer and as an actress with international projection. I also want to say this in Spanish before I ask Lucero to say a few things. Primeramente, me gustaría presentarles a la cantante y actriz sensacional, la reina de México, Lucero. Para la mayoría de ustedes, Lucero no es una persona desconocida. Ella conquistó nuestros corazones desde muy pequeña. Lucero inició su carrera artística cuando ella solo tenía diez años. Cuando Televisa le ofreció la oportunidad de salir en un programa juvenil titulado Alegrías de Mediodía. En 1982, Lucero apareció en su primera novela, Chispita. En ese mismo año, Lucero inició su carrera de constante grabando su primer álbum titulado Te Prometo. Lucero ha grabado muchas canciones, pero más conocida por las siguientes canciones: Electricidad, Vete Con Ella, Tacticas de Guerra, Cuéntame, Llorar, y muchas canciones más. Desde entonces, Lucero ha continuado a conquistar nuestros corazones y el mundo entero. Lucero ha sido una de las artistas y cantantes más jóvenes y consistentes en su carrera. Y para nosotros, no nomás es la reina de México, sino la reina del mundo de habla hispana. Para mí, es un gran honor presentar la reina de México y la reina de la fiesta Broadway
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I wanted to say thank you and welcome and special hello to Lucero and to our friend, Mr. McDonald, Ronald McDonald. He always adds a nice, light touch to the fiesta, and it's incredible that we're celebrating today, Fiesta Broadway and the Powwow International here today in the chamber at the same time. And I think it's a testament to the hard work that we've all done here in Los Angeles. The fiesta is such an incredible gathering of performers and music, music styles from all over the world. Here at the same time with Powwow International, again, an incredible gathering of people from not all over the country, but all over the world, from the travel industry. And so I am very happy and proud that both groups will be able to interact with each other, to be able to experience each other, and to be able to tell the rest of the world why Los Angeles is such a unique, creative capital of culture and arts and diversity. So thank you and congratulations. Look forward to seeing you on Sunday.
Well, I always speak in Spanish. I sing in Spanish, and whatever I do, I do it in Spanish. I even think and dream in Spanish. So it's not very easy for me to speak in English right now in front of all these important people. It's for me such an honor to be here, and thank you so much for that beautiful presentation, Antonio. He said so many beautiful things about me that I don't know what to say now, but, well, nothing. Just, I think my only mission in my life, in my career, is to bring a lot of happiness and harmony and love to the people who listen to my songs. and harmony and love to the people who listen to my songs since I was a kid. And I'm really pleased to be here. I think that Fiesta Broadway is such a great festivity for Mexican people. I have to thank to all the Latin people, all the persons who speak Spanish in the United States for making the things that I do a little bit more important or bigger, and nothing else. I just have to thank everybody, all the Mexican people who lives in the City of Los Angeles for their presence this next Sunday at Fiesta Broadway. And I hope to have a great show and to make everybody smile a little bit more. And thank you, Antonio, again, for this presentation, and thank you for my Mexican people and the people who speak in Spanish in this country, so we Mexicans can be a little bit bigger and better each day. Thank you, Antonio.
I would also like to present the doting mother, also named Lucero.
I said you could see where you got your beauty from, your heart and your soul as well. You know, Lucero, you mentioned Cinco de Mayo, a Mexican holiday, a day that we acknowledge when those Indian peasants took on a colonial power, then known as the most powerful army in the world, and defeated them. And what it spoke to was the sentiments, the yearnings of a people to be free of that colonial domination. And today, I can tell you that not only Mexicans celebrate Cinco de Mayo, but all freedom-loving people, and that's why we're going to have so many people at this event. This event, Fiesta de Broadway, is the biggest Cinco de Mayo event anywhere in the country. And so, Lucero, on behalf of all my colleagues, the 15 members of the City Council, behalf of the entire City of Los Angeles, we want to present you with this resolution, which, you know, there's only one page here, so it attempts to capsulize and chronicle your success from those first days as a young 10-year-old sensation to today where you are truly the queen of music and culture and soul in the Latin and Spanish-speaking world. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we present you with this resolution.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Greg Smith to come up and join me.
Mr. Smith is trying to make his way to join you.
I'd like to introduce you to two visiting government employees from Finland, Kelko Hanty and Kelko Nigren, and have them come up. These are two individuals that have come all the way to this country, and they will be touring a variety of cities throughout the United States, mainly to look at how the City of LA and a lot of our major cities deal with public works, but really zeroing in on how graffiti abatement occurs in the United States and how they can take these programs to their country. They're not...
They're still touring.
Cancel, they're on the... They're still in their tour. We're going to go to item one, then. Okay?
All right. Mr. Parks has another presentation. Go ahead.
Let me go to the League of African-American Women's Eighth Annual AIDS Walk, and I'd like to ask Ms. Sharon Hicks to come up and Victoria Raul to come up. And also, I'd like to ask our AIDS Coordinator, Stephen Simon, to come up. Basically, we're here today, members, to ask these guests to come up because we're honoring them because of the upcoming 5K AIDS Walk that's going to be held this weekend. Ms. Sharon Hicks is the President of the League of African-American Women. She is here in the sense of being honored for the Eighth Annual Southern California Regional 5K AIDS Walk for Minority Women and Children. The League is a consortium of African-American women and was founded by Congresswoman Milliner McDonald in recognition for the women to share information and develop strategic plans for improving community, educational, economic, and cultural awareness in our community. The League of African-American Women sponsored their first annual walk in 1997. The proceeds for this year's walk will benefit several clinics in Southern California, Charles Drew, Harbor UCLA Pediatrics, THC Clinic, Watts Healthcare, just to name a few. This organization has raised literally millions of dollars in behalf of minority women and children to combat AIDS. We also are very proud to have Victoria Raul, the lead actress known as Drew in the Emmy Award-winning soap opera, The Young and the Restless. She is this year's honorary chair for this event, but we also would like to acknowledge her for her efforts in her own foundation, in which she has created the Raul Foster Children's Positive Plan. She spent 18 years of her life in foster care, and so, this has prompted her to move forward to develop scholarships and design foster care programs that are beneficial for our community. So, I'd like to ask, first of all, Ms. Raul to come up as the honorary chair this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And also, Ms. Hicks from the League of African-American Women. And then, I'd like to ask Ms. Perry to also make some comments, and then, Mr. Simon.
I just want to say thank you very much for lending your celebrity and your cachet and your status to be able to help us bring more continued media focus on this very important health care issue, and I'll be there, joining Mr. Parks. I just know he's going to be out there walking and...
Somewhere.
Somewhere. He'll be walking somewhere.
Downstate Dominguez.
We'll have him out there. But that it's... I did that walk many years ago, and it's grown larger and larger every year, and I just want to express my appreciation on behalf of the women that we all represent. Thank you.
And I think I'd like to also hear from Mr. Steve Simon, outstanding AIDS Coordinator for the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember. The HIV and AIDS epidemic is clearly a major health crisis for people all across Los Angeles. We all know that. Did you know that as of 2001, Latinas had an AIDS diagnosis rate five times that of Anglo-American women, and African-American women had an AIDS diagnosis rate 23 times greater than Anglo-American women? 62% of children born to HIV-infected mothers were African-American, and it's getting worse. The City of Los Angeles AIDS Coordinator's Office recognizes the importance of HIV and AIDS prevention programs for women. And while women make up only 10% of the epidemic in Los Angeles County, my office commits more than 25% of our resources to programs targeted exclusively to women of color. Why? Because we won't wait for a greater percentage of women to become HIV-positive before we take serious action. So, I applaud Councilmember Parks and the entire Los Angeles City Council for recognizing the HIV and AIDS crisis among women, particularly women of color in Los Angeles. Council, you recognize the importance of programs for women in the city white paper issued last World AIDS Day, and today, the AIDS Coordinator's Office joins you in applauding the work of the League of African-American Women for their eighth annual Southern California Regional 5K AIDS Walk for Minority Women and Children. Thank you.
Victoria, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. I'd like to thank all of those present, as well as the County of Los Angeles, the State of California, and the nation, of course, for all of the work that you have put forth for foster children. We have a half a million foster children in the nation and a disproportionate number of foster youth in the State of California, and there again, in Los Angeles County, predominantly African-American boys. And as a former foster youth of 18 years, I thank UPS and the Annie E. Casey Foundation, Casey Family Services, for all of the awareness that they bring to the nation. Remember, please, that May is National Foster Care Awareness Month, and I hope that you will continue to do all that you can to support our nation's very precious people, our foster children. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. The League of African-American Women really appreciates the support that the city has given and the county, and my friend here, Victoria Raul. This has just been a really great combination because AIDS and HIV will affect the family, and hence, it will affect foster care. And so, that's why this is such a winning combination. So, our walk will be tomorrow, 7:30 a.m. registration. It's 5K. That's only three miles, in case you're not used to metric, and it's at Cal State Dominguez Hills. Registration starts at 7:30. The walk will start at 9:00, and so, we hope to see everyone there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to go back and take some photos.
Let me do one up here, if that's okay. Let me recognize at this time Councilmember Perry. Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Would the members of the Los Angeles County Latino Caucus on AIDS come up, as well as Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Reyes? That would be Brenda Calderón, Tino Pinyon, Diana Oliva, and Lawrence Fernandez. I think Mr. Garcetti, if Mr. Garcetti is going to join us as well. Okay, great. All right. It's a pleasure, indeed, to introduce to you some of the organizers of an important group called Alianza, the Los Angeles County Latino Caucus on AIDS, and again, a coincidence, but following on the heels of our previous presentation. I want to introduce Brenda Calderón, co-chair of Alianza, Tino Pinyon, co-chair of Alianza, and Diana Oliva, evaluations coordinator, and I believe Lawrence Fernandez, who is head of the fundraising committee. Alianza, the Los Angeles County Latino Caucus on AIDS, works to provide information to the HIV-positive Latinos and the Latino community at large in Los Angeles. I ask them to come here today and to join me and my colleagues to help mark the opening doors for A Better Tomorrow 10th Annual Latino AIDS Conference this Saturday, April 24th, 2004, which continues their efforts to educate Latinos about this life-threatening illness. Attendees of the conference will be provided with the latest information on HIV/AIDS, medical treatments, treatment adherence, public benefits, and many other important bits of information about needed health procedures available throughout our city. This conference will provide a full day of crucial education and training to over 900 individuals infected or affected by HIV/AIDS. Alianza has made free HIV testing and counseling available throughout our diverse communities, and will continue this mission at the conference tomorrow. So, today, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Alianza for their commitment to all people of Los Angeles and for their commitment to educate the public at large about HIV and AIDS, and particularly, in our communities of color, and to say that we humbly appreciate all that you do. And I would like to ask my colleagues, Mr. Garcetti and Reyes, to say a few words, and then, we'll have a representative from Alianza speak as well.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Perry, and thank you for your leadership on this issue as well. Alianza knows that we have about almost 1 in 100 people in this city that we walk by is HIV-positive or has AIDS. We know that when you add hepatitis C, we were just talking about this upstairs, about there are 30,000 HIV/AIDS infections here in the City of Los Angeles, but the County of Los Angeles has about 180,000 hepatitis C infections as well, and often, those two diseases are commingled together. The work of Alianza, especially when you look in the Latino community, the African-American community, where we have the worrying rates on the rise and much of the growth in HIV locally comes from the community, it's very important, and I want to thank Alianza on behalf of my community for everything that you do to make sure. We can't celebrate the 10th convention on this. We can't celebrate the 10th gathering, but we commemorate it, and we hope that there won't have to be an 11th, or a 12th, or a 13th, that we turn back the tide. My own cousin was Latino, passed away early on of AIDS here in Los Angeles, and I think at that time, there was very little education, not just within the Latino community, but in the community writ large. And I know that what you are doing to make sure that our GLBT community, that our straight community, and that the Latino community knows the risks, and that we push forward with things and solutions like SB 1159, Mr. John Vescuncelos' bill, to allow California to be like all 45 other states in this country that allow non-prescription syringes to be given out at drugstores, to be purchased at drugstores, that there are solutions out there. We know you'll be talking about that, and we thank you for your hard work on the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I want to thank Councilman Perry for bringing forth this great organization. Alianza means alliance, and we need this alliance in a day in which, ever since Prop. 13 passed, education has fallen way behind in how we invest in our youth. We invest more today in our prisons than we do in our educational institutions. So, to have these organizations is critical. It's critical because we're reaching out to the young people who today do not have the same educational resources they used to have, back when California was rated number one in education. So, I want to thank them for their hard work, for the communities that are suffering, as noted by Councilman Garcetti and Councilman Perry, and I just want to thank them because they are saving the future of our children. Thank you so much.
Good morning, the City of Los Angeles and Councilmembers. My name is Diana Oliva, and I'm a transgender living with HIV for the last four years. So, this subject on HIV and AIDS is very dear and near to my heart, and I would like to, first and foremost, thank you for your consideration, this opportunity, the support, and the recognition that we need to continue to talk about HIV and AIDS. Once we become silent on this subject, we know that it equals death. So, I thank you from the bottom of my heart that you guys keep on bringing the subject of HIV and AIDS, and I invite you all, each and every one of you, to our 10th Annual Latino AIDS Conference tomorrow at the Downtown Hyatt Regency Hotel from 8:00 to 5:00. We're expecting over 1,200 Latinos around California to participate in this educational event. So, with that, I would like to thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I am serving as one of the co-chairs. My other co-chair is not able to be here. I don't do this often, so I'm very nervous, so I apologize. I am a woman living with HIV. I was diagnosed seven years ago when I was pregnant. The reason why I stand before you today is because my fight for my life started then. And I serve very proud today as a volunteer for Alianza. We all come together because we know how important the message is in our community. We need to bring this message to them, just like I thought that AIDS was not going to happen to me. Well, I want to break that silence, and I want to bring that... Well, I want to break that silence, and I want to bring that message to them. I'm going to read you our mission statement. It's very short, and I just want to, so that you understand what is it that we do and why we do it. Alianza, Los Angeles Latino Caucus on HIV and AIDS. To work, serve, and focus on the needs of the Latinos infected and affected by HIV and AIDS. To come together in a cooperative effort towards enhancing and maintaining dignity, pride, and quality of life for the Latino men, women, transgender, youth, children, and families living with HIV and AIDS. Thank you so much for the opportunity. And a special thanks for Jan Perry for doing this for us. This recognition means that the work that we're putting on together is not being shot at, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to come before you and share a few words about Alianza. My name is Lawrence Fernandez Jr. I was born and raised in East Los Angeles, a son of Lawrence and Carmen Fernandez, who were also born and raised in East Los Angeles. After losing my parents to complications due to AIDS, my mother in 1986 and my father in 1992, I decided to become a part of the solution and not become a part of the problem. It's a great honor to be a part of Alianza, to give back to the community that has done so much for me. We're hearing of the opportunities that our young people in LA County have been given. You're looking at an example of our Head Start program, of our public school system, of our community college program. I've been given the opportunity to have a lot of work opportunities, but also ventures in the community that come before me. And it's now my pleasure to be a part of and serve on the committee planning of the Alianza Conference for HIV and AIDS. I'd like to read to you briefly the history of Alianza. In 1991, Alianza, the Los Angeles County Latino Caucus on HIV and AIDS, started a mission to educate, serve, and empower the local Latino community infected and affected by HIV and AIDS, to bring about change in education and services available. Alianza's efforts were spearheaded by a handful of frontline HIV/AIDS service providers, including first-ever projects like Latino Intergovernmental Hearing on HIV and AIDS and the Latino HIV Conference. Recognized by the Los Angeles County Commission on Health Services, Alianza membership is now comprised of representatives from over 20 agencies at large members and other members of the community, all serving the Latino community. We have an obligation to help educate and empower our brothers, our sisters, our mothers, our fathers, our sons, our daughters, and anybody else who wants to identify as a person of color in the Latino community. And as long as our numbers, as long as our community are a part of that community that hits the high-risk population, women of color, young people ages 17 and 24, we have a job to do. It's our job to educate and empower our own. If not, who's going to do that for us? These are people who are a part of our constituency, a part of our family, a part of our community, and we have a job to do. And until that job is done, you can expect to see Alianza either. These hearings in the community are serving the population the best way we know how. Again, I thank you for this opportunity. I invite you to participate. I encourage you to participate, and I look forward to your participation in a closer relationship with Alianza. Thank you.
And just one more comment in Spanish.
I need to do this because, as you know, my English is not my first language, so I do this better in Spanish. But I do want to, I see a lot of Latinos here, and I want to acknowledge the fact that a lot of us only, you know, speak Spanish, and I want them to take the message too. But first of all, I would like also to say that Alianza, the conference, something that makes us unique, is that the conference is the only conference in the United States that is totally in Spanish. All the presenters present in Spanish. Everything that is there for them is in the language that they understand, to help them understand what their treatments are and for them to also understand how they can take care of themselves. Gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí enfrente de ustedes. Yo soy una mujer viviendo con este virus. Tengo siete años que mi diagnóstico vino por, me diagnosticaron cuando estaba embarazada. Estoy aquí hoy sirviendo como una de las co-chairs de Alianza. Somos un grupo de colaboradores que queremos llevar esta conferencia a toda, a todo el condado de Los Ángeles, todos los latinos que solo hablan español y que muchas veces se ven dejados, sin la oportunidad de poder asistir y aprender a conferencias que son en inglés. Los invitamos. Traje un póster, está en español. Este fue nuestra campaña este año. Tenemos muchos artistas que lo hacen todo por voluntario, trabajo voluntario. Son muchas gracias por su tiempo y su atención. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Did you want to add something, Mr. Veragosa?
I was just going to thank Councilmember Garcetti, Perry, and Reyes for bringing the folks from Alianza here. This is a very, very, very important issue. We had an earlier press conference on the whole issue of the need for education, and I thank you for coming today and for sponsoring this very important conference.
Thank you, Mr. Veragosa. Colleagues, it is 11:35 a.m., and we still have six more members with presentations. Ms. Perry, did you have another one at this time?
Yes.
Okay. After Ms. Perry's second presentation, unless there's an objection, what I'd like to do is address the special meeting agenda that we have. If those matters can go on consent, we can dispense with those rather quickly. If there's discussion, then we'll call those special two, and we'll continue to wait.
I believe this is Mr. Ludlow's presentation, and this is the powwow, if you'll be joining us.
Okay. Why don't you two go ahead?
Good morning, and I am pleased to stand here with my colleague, Mr. Ludlow. It is a pleasure to recognize the Travel Industry Association of America as they host the 2004 International Powwow here in our very exciting and diverse city of Los Angeles. This world-class convention brings people from all over the nation and all over the world to negotiate an estimate $3 billion in future United States travel business. This is an incredible opportunity for our city to reap the benefits of international travelers and those who provide service in the industry and to support our local economy. Over this five-day convention, we are expecting to yield approximately $9.8 million in direct spending for Los Angeles, in Los Angeles, thanks to the over 5,000 delegates who will be housed in eight downtown hotels and two Hollywood hotels. This is truly exciting, and I want to thank Bill Norman for being here with us today as president and CEO of the Travel Industry Association. Mr. Norman has made a tremendous impact on national travel, and I would like to extend a special thanks to him today for bringing the 2004 International Powwow back to the city of Los Angeles. This time around, we have so much more to offer. Disney Hall, Our Lady of the Angels Cathedral, Colburn School, just to name a few, Japanese-American National Museum, all sorts of cultural facilities have come online and have so much more to offer our guests. Additionally, our guests will have an opportunity to explore our unique neighborhoods, thanks to tours that have been arranged for them by LA Inc. I want to thank LA Inc. for all that they have done to make this possible. The staff at LA Inc. has worked very hard to ensure that Powwow guests get an opportunity to see the best of what our city has to offer. From Universal Studios to Hollywood and Highland, and a grand finale at the Walt Disney Concert Hall, the delegates are in for an incredible night. So thank you very much, and I look forward to enjoying the festivities with you as well. And I'd like to ask my colleague, Mr. Ludlow, to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry, and I too want to join in in welcoming Bill and also our new president of LA Inc., Mark Lieberman. And just to reiterate what Councilmember Perry said, that this is a great opportunity for Los Angeles. Greg Smith, our colleague on the convention's tourism and entertainment committee, and Tom Labange and Antonio Veragosa, who will join us on the MTA board. All of us have been talking about this over the last week, about the tremendous victory that this was for Los Angeles to have Powwow here in LA. And, Mr. Norman, we just thank you so much for selecting LA. As the councilmember said, you're going to enjoy this week. It's packed with a lot of activities, and we're just so thrilled that Los Angeles is the home of Powwow 2004. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. On behalf of the Travel Industry Association of America and the $552 billion travel and tourism industry that we serve, we're delighted to be here. This week, some 5,000 delegates representing some 75 countries from around the world will bring the largest tour operators to the city. In this time, as Councilperson Perry said, some $3 billion worth of business will be transacted, and of that amount, some 10% or approximately $300 million will come to Los Angeles and to the California area. These individuals will come here, they will spend their money, and you will offer them a wonderful venue. We're delighted to be back in Los Angeles, and this is going to be a wonderful week, and we thank you for your hospitality.
You know, on behalf of the employees of LA Inc. and of course, our 850 member organizations, we also thank you for this recognition. We also want to say thanks to, of course, to the city council for their support. We really appreciate that. We are excited, we are ready to showcase this great city of ours as the 5,000 delegates come and start coming here today and tomorrow. And these are such influential people in making travel decisions, so we're ready to roll out that red carpet for those 5,000. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to mention one last thing, and Councilmember Parks will appreciate this. Colleagues, you should know that Mr. Norman's son is the marketing director of the Washington Redskins, and so we're hoping maybe we could get the Redskins here today in exchange for a Powwow. So anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Colleagues, I will divert just temporarily from the course I laid out a minute ago and recognize Mr. Reyes for a presentation.
Council President, I want to thank you for the adjustment. I want to thank Councilman Greg Smith for his compassion. I pleaded with him, said, "Let me go first." I have the honor and privilege of presenting to you a gentleman, Alex Barath. And the reason why he's here is because every day we spend a great amount of time in City Hall. We look at the grandeur of the architecture and the craftsmanship, and today we have someone who is with us, who is experiencing a form of homecoming. He is a resident of Cypress Park. He was born in Indiana in 1915. Like I said, he's 89 years old. And it's even more special, Mr. Alex Barath, is that he worked on the original construction of City Hall at the age of 13. Mr. Barath assisted his father in construction work in the initial construction of City Hall as a water boy. Members, it's not often that we get to thank someone who helped us give us a hand on this great building, but today we have the honor, Mr. Barath, of thanking you, which I'll give you a round of applause, Mr. Barath. Mr. Barath is one of those few Angelenos who have lived through numerous important events in our city's history. And I'm not sure if Tom Labange is listening, but Mr. Barath actually saw the horse racing at the Allee Coliseum. He saw the 1932 Olympics take place. He saw Babe Ruth play baseball at a park that was located on Washington and Hill. He saw the great Barney Oldfield race at Lincoln Park racetrack. For those who may not know, City Hall was dedicated April 26, 1928. So today's presentation is taking place 76 years almost to the day when City Hall was first dedicated. For this reason, I'm presenting our Cypress Park resident, Alex Barath, with a resolution to commemorate his involvement with the construction of City Hall. Mr. Barath, thanks so much for spending today and so much for your patience since 9:30 this morning. I want to thank you for your strength and your family for their, we'd like to share a few words.
Thank you for accepting me. Okay. Shall I continue to talk and say something? Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Ed Reyes for inviting me to participate in this occasion. And I feel that I'm one of the very few survivors that helped build City Hall living today. And also, I can remember very many things of the surrounding of City Hall. As an example, the oil wells that were surrounded around here. And also, what else? Also, the streetcars and the red cars that were going. And one reason they took out the streetcars, perhaps all of you know why, is because the tire companies instigated a scheme that where if the streetcars were omitted, that they would, the automobile company, General Motors, would participate in the building of the buses, and the tire companies would furnish the tires. And that was one of the big issues at that particular time. And also, like Mr. Ed Reyes said, I saw Barney Oldfield up near Lincoln Park with my father in automobile racing, and the building of the Coliseum, they held horse racing there. And then years later, they decided, when Los Angeles was awarded the Olympics, they reconstructed the Coliseum, and my father worked on that. And Exposition Park, they built a special swimming pool for the 1932 Olympics, which is still standing there today. And I can remember them tearing down Moncorral Hill, which was a very sad thing to do, I would say, because there were many, many beautiful homes there. I went up there after the destruction of some of them. They even had elevators just for two floors. One of them was down in the basement to take them up to the first and second floor. And I remember Angel's Flight, at that particular time, it cost only one cent. It was located on Second and Hill Street, right across the street from the farmer's market.
Papa, just one more thing about Lindbergh.
About what? Oh, yes. There's one more thing I'd like to emphasize, perhaps maybe all of you know, that when Colonel Charles Lindbergh flew in his plane called the Spirit of St. Louis, he landed safely in France, but in the event that he didn't land, and he hadn't landed in the ocean, his plane would not sink, for the simple reason because the wings of the plane, the two front wings and the short, small wing, had...
With ping-pongs?
Yeah. It had ping-pong balls in it, and the plane would not sink. So that was one of the great...
But the parade, I think, was the most memorable for you.
Oh, yeah. And another parade, I saw Lindbergh, he was in 1927, on the corner of Santa Barbara and Figueroa Street. He was sitting in the backseat of a Packer, waving to everyone, and...
Winding up, Dad.
And at the same time, they still have that Felix Chevrolet sign there that's been there for 80 years, and behind that, the Shrine Auditorium. And that'll be all. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Barath. Thank you, the Barath family. Thank you so much.
My friends here.
Want to present to your friends?
Okay, first of all, this is my darling wife, my darling daughter.
His darling daughter.
And I have Mr. Rick Swanson.
Mr. Rick Swanson?
Yep, that's the manager of the...
Thank you, welcome.
...Park Senior Center.
Good to have you.
I have Lear Rosalie, that's a very dear friend of mine.
Rosalie, thank you so much.
I have Miss Emma Prestley, which is my traveling companion.
Emma's Preston.
Thank you so much. Vegas, that's... Vegas dancers and whatever. And I have my very best friend here, Mr. Alan Maes.
Mr. Alan Maes. Thank you so much, Mr. Maes. Thank you, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Now, colleagues, if we can just take a deep breath here, there are still one, two, three, four additional presentations or presenters left. But we do have a manner of a special meeting agenda that was posted for 10:30 with two items on it. If there's an opportunity to dispense with them quickly, let's dispense with those items. Let's temporarily recess the regular meeting agenda. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on the special meeting.
Cardinals, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Labonge, Ledlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viragosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, 13 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The special meeting is now in session. We have two items, both which have had public hearings in committee. And we have those committee reports with recommendations before us at this time. Let's hold item one of the special meeting agenda just for a second here. Item two of the special meeting agenda, is there any questions? Do we need to hold it for discussion? If not, let's open the roll on item number two of the special meeting agenda. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Now, coming back to item number one of the special meeting agenda, colleagues, there have been a couple of questions. Let me call the CLA forward to address some of these issues or to explain a continuance and how those can be resolved. Mr. Labonge.
They're on their way up there. I just wanted to recognize Marlboro School, the CIF champions. If you could hold on, I know you've got to get back to class, but I just wanted to... Someone's walking up to the... Stand up, Marlboro, CIF champions of the all-of-Southern California Girls Basketball Team. Thank you. We've got a great coach. And I hope you can hold on. We want to make a formal presentation. But I took advantage of no one being in the center chair. And I'll keep talking unless someone's in the center chair.
No, no, no. Ron Deaton, please forward. "Front and center," as Mr. Holden used to say. "Front and center." Colleagues, this matter of the transfer station that is now before us has a couple of unresolved issues. I had suggested a continuance of it, recognition of what still remains before us today. There's some items that could be acted upon today without conflicting with the issues.
Right. I would recommend that we continue for one week, items two, three, four, and five of item number one. That'll give us a chance to discuss with employees of the transfer station, et cetera, clarify what's going on. But everything else allows us... We need the contracts and the rates, et cetera, to be able to operate.
Okay, so what exactly does go forward so people don't get scared that it's gone?
The fees, transferring money for operating supplies, developing and accompanying ordinance that allows us to set up the money for money to flow into a trust fund for the private haulers. For use of the... When the private haulers use the transfer station, they'll provide a fee. We want a trust fund in order for that money to go into, et cetera. And that'll provide for the ordinances. It'll provide for the dollars and for the rates. But the personnel issues will wait one week. And it'll give us a chance to have some discussions and clarify some issues. And so everybody understands what we have in mind.
Okay. Colleagues, we have a proposal to act on some elements of this. Put off the personnel-related items for one week. And let us resolve that. If that's... If this is going to lead to a lengthy discussion, then we're just going to hold it at the desk, get back to presentations. Ms. Perry, followed by Ms. Hahn.
There's no need for a lengthy discussion on my part. I just want to make sure that whatever action ultimately we take, that it reflects a request on behalf of myself, the Chair of EQ, that any requests for additional money come back to EQ. Because it was not indicated in the action today as it was agendized.
Ms. Hahn.
Well, I just... I know there's some people here today, some workers who are very concerned about their jobs. And I understand that. I'm wondering if this gives them any comfort that we're moving forward with part of this and yet leaving the personnel issues till later. I think they would probably feel a lot more comfortable if we would just hold all of this and move it forward together. What's the urgency of moving half of it forward? If I was worried about my job, I would think this would be some leverage that we not move anything forward until we settle the personnel issues.
So probably continuing the entire matter for one week.
No. The reason being is we have fees that we need to charge people. We... It is... The facility is ours. We need to... Rates in order to charge. We need the ordinance to have a place to put the fees when we buy... When we charge them. The personnel issues are all included in three, four, five, and six.
Okay, Ron, I'm going to have to cut you off. Colleagues, there are two options then, or continue the entire matter for one week or continue to hold it at the desk and take it up at the end of the presentations. But we have four or five more to do. So I'm not sure exactly how long that's going to take.
I'd like to take it up after presentation, just so I can feel a little more comfortable.
Okay. Let's keep this item on the desk, then. Let's temporarily recess the special meeting agenda. Let's get back to presentations. Our next presenter is Ms. Hahn.
I know, really. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. And thank you to everyone who has remained vigilant while we go through these presentations. I'm here to congratulate and honor and thank those who've been involved with Extreme Home Makeover, which many of us are familiar with. And they decided to come to Watts. And they decided to take Sweet Alice's home and absolutely turn it into a dream home. And I will never forget, on November 12th, I will never forget that night as long as I live, we had snow in Watts. And we had hail in Watts. And we had devastation in Watts. And I'll never forget, it was about midnight. And I said, "I can't leave until I go see my friend Sweet Alice's house." And what I saw was absolutely devastating. The entire house was flooded. Carpet was flooded. Found out later that many of the toys and dolls that Sweet collects every year to give to underprivileged children were ruined. Furniture was ruined. It was an unbelievable mess. Unbelievable mess. But even in her time of her own personal disaster, Sweet Alice Harris always thinks about someone else and always thinks about someone who might be in a worse condition than she is. Even though that night, I couldn't imagine anyone else in a worse condition. So we were all joyful. We all rejoiced. Maybe some of you saw it. This particular program ran the last Sunday in March and also just reran, I think, last Thursday night. But in case you didn't see it, could we roll the tape?
She has dedicated her life to changing the lives of others. And then this happened. Take a look.
A freak storm, one of the most powerful we've seen in years.
Hail covered the streets like snow, flash floods all across Watts, where five inches of rain came down in just two hours.
Do y'all know you in Watts?
So listen, I only see three of you guys. Where's your daughter and your granddaughter?
Well, because she have asthma and it's ducked on the semen flowing there. You can't say that.
She has to sleep somewhere else.
Right.
I know how much Alice, she's in love with her neighborhood. I feel like her dream is to make over the neighborhood, not just her house.
Sears American Dream Campaign came in. And boy, did they come in. They came in in quite a great fashion.
Now we're talking. Now we're going to get some work done. That's what we need. Wow! The Sears American Dream team.
Riding to the house was simply beautiful. Oh, man. The yards were beautiful. Were trees and flowers everywhere. Clean, no doubt about it. Wow! I can't believe they bought Beverly Hills to Watts. I've never seen Iver Street look so pretty. And the people, white, black, and brown. Everybody smiling. I was so happy for my community. Cause my community was at peace. I'm so glad.
Well, I was there that day and got to take a tour of the house. And it was absolutely unbelievable what the Extreme Makeover that happened, not only to Sweet Alice's house, but to the entire block of Lou Dillon. And I think that was what was so important to this neighborhood and to the community of Watts, that Extreme Home Makeover, its production company, Endemall, ABCs, and the Sears American Dream Foundation teamed up to transform an entire neighborhood. Alice's neighbors received brand-new appliances, mattresses, blankets. The volunteers that were out there for the time that this was happening was unbelievable. They came from all over to spend their time really improving house by house, an entire block in Watts. And we'll never forget it. This is a great example. You can say that when it's your turn to talk. I'm going to let you talk. They... It was just... We really want to... That's why we have them here to honor today is because we wanted to thank them for not only doing an Extreme Makeover of an extreme woman, but really transforming an entire neighborhood. And I know you probably all get tired of me saying that. But, you know, this community has felt neglected. This community has felt like no one cares. And this community has historically sort of felt like their needs sort of went unnoticed. So really meant a lot to us that ABC and the Sears American Dream Foundation said, "Nope, we are paying attention. And we want to do something to improve not only the neighborhood." I think this transforms some lives because of what happened. So Sweet Alice, why don't you say a few words? And you can say whatever you want.
Before we hear from you, Sweet Alice, we have Mr. Parks, and Ms. Perry, and Ms. Gruel, and Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to say thank you to the organization and what you've done to the community. And I really want to say to Alice, keep up the good work and the things that you've done. You've always been out there, and as Janice Hahn said, looking to help other people even when you were in the middle of the storm. And I think your area doesn't just stay in Watts. You have an impact throughout the city of L.A. But I think this is a true indication of people coming together, communities closer. And it's unfortunate that a storm had to occur to do that. But it's something that will last for a long time because those relationships are still there and still working strong to do other things in the community. So thank you for being with us.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to just say, Sweet Alice, who is larger-than-life with a heart bigger than the state of California and always a hug and a good word for everybody. You're a tireless advocate, not only for your community, but you benefit all of us. And I just want to say to the foundation, if you need another house, we're just up the street. Me, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Reyes, we're just up the street. And, you know, we... Well, I'm not Sweet Alice, but, you know, we can make it feel good too. All right? Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Jan, you know, and the whole Valley Fair share. We want one in the valley, too, right? Tony and Alex, want to make sure. But I wanted to stand up and in one say, "Okay, Janice, you beat me on this one. We were thinking how great it would be to do an Extreme Makeover in my district. And we've been having discussions about who do we approach?" So now, not only did you do it first, but there they are. So I'll get their cards. But you're right. It is about... An Extreme Makeover is not just cosmetic. It is about changing a neighborhood. And we all work very, very hard to utilize the city services that we have to improve neighborhoods and to demonstrate. If you mow your lawn, if you are able to have paint, we have a handy worker program, all kinds of programs out there to help our neighborhoods and also to have them help themselves. And we're trying to do that, house by house and block by block, with our city services. And this project, this Extreme Makeover in your neighborhood is a demonstration about how those items can make a difference. And people have pride in their neighborhood when they're able to see some of those changes. And we talk about homeownership being so important because people have a stake in their neighborhood and their community. And this is demonstrated. So I just want to say thank you to those in behind Janice and Sweet Alice for all of your hard work in making this a reality. And to yes, say, we have some places in the valley and I could use your help. And also to comment on Sweet Alice. She's my second mom here in Los Angeles and has taught me a lot about caring for community. And we've worked on L.A.'s Best together in a number of items when I worked in Mayor Bradley's office. And she is someone that is deserving of so much praise and deserving of this kind of makeover in the community. And so keep plugging along. Keep giving us a hard time, Sweet Alice, about what we need to do. And thank you, Janice, for bringing up today that knowledge. Thank you.
Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Cardinals.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sweet Alice, it's good to see you here again. And your community is a community that is not negative. It's a community that is the stronghold of Los Angeles. And Janice has done a lot to help that community since she's been a member of the City Council. I always talk about the San Fernando Valley, how we feel neglected. And you've been an advocate for your community for so many years. The good in your community is all reflected in you and Sears and Extreme Makeover and all those folks that have contributed to that improvement of that community. It's all part and parcel of working together in united fashion. So I want to congratulate you for shining on television and making that spirit come through. And also for the TV production, the crew, everyone that was involved in this project. Because it's long overdue that South Los Angeles, Watts, gets the respect that it needs and it deserves. There's a long tradition down there. And it's not about gang banging. It's about Sweet Alice and the good, honorable people down there who have to sometimes endure some intolerable conditions. So congratulations to you. And thank you for Extreme Makeover and Sears and everyone else in the crew that helped bring this about. Congratulations to you all. And thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardinals.
I just want to make an observation and a contrast that I've observed out of you, Sweet Alice. You know, we're talking about makeovers. And there you are on TV, giving everybody hugs and love. And I'll tell you what. People, before they go on TV, they try to spend at least an hour or so in that trailer getting some makeup. You don't need it. You prove... You prove, and I'm serious, you prove that what you are on the inside comes out. You are such a beautiful person. You deserve this and much, much more. Like my colleague said here, keep telling us what we're doing wrong. Keep us on the straight and narrow. And Janice, you are one lucky councilmember.
Sweet Alice.
Thank you. Thank you. Giving honor to God. I just love all of you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Giving honor to God. I just love all of you all. You know I love you. But if you don't see me, you know my prayers are with you. But I want you to remember. Number one, remember the supervisor Hahn that got me started. And I can never forget that. And I know he is smiling down on me, saying, "That a girl, Alice, that a girl." Because that's usually what he would say if he was living. And I have to remember him. But remember the, the extreme makeover that came to us? When it all, you know, we felt like we was dogs. And nobody cared. But yet, we were there. We are human beings. And we do care. We love people. It's five percent. It's out of order, but ninety-five percent of us are good people. And just to be like thrown away, and then if somebody come in here that didn't have to come, wasn't asking for anything. But can I help you? And help my community? And now, my community is speaking and waving and cleaning their yards. You can see the bedding that they have put out to throw away because they have new bedings. A dog shouldn't have slept on them. But they have new beds. They have new stalls, new computers. I mean, we feel like we sung out. And for that, I thank God for that. And don't forget the people that done it. Janice, thank the man for me because he has something to do with it too. And I thank God for you. Don't ever forget. Whatever you do for the new one, God said, "You're doing it for me, and I'll pay you." Don't you all forget. God will pay everyone. And I'm ever grateful for you. And don't forget the extreme makeover. When they say extreme, they mean extreme. We got some furniture from Comer's deal. The neighbors got five hundred dollar stipend. The students got laptop computer. I mean, you see, don't nobody do this for us. They have excuse. We scatter those people. But Extreme Makeover says, "We gonna help those people." And I want to thank them. Thank you all. Because if it wasn't you all, it probably wouldn't be them. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Let me, now let's take an opportunity to thank those people who made it happen. From ABC Television, Vicki Dummer, who's the Vice President for Current and Alternative Series. Vicki, come, accept this and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Councilman Hahn. I'd like to thank you for this recognition and for the L.A. City Council. With us here, we have some of our folks from ABC, Meredith Mamoda and Jenny Belcher, who work with Integrated Marketing, who are Sears' touchstones. So, appreciate all of them being here. We also have some of our Sears representatives from the American Dream Campaign, and some of our folks from Endomall, our production company. I would just also like to extend my thanks to the Los Angeles Police Department, who did some wonderful work for us out there during production. And they really went above and beyond, so I appreciate that. And to Tom Forman, who's the executive producer, and his crew, who are right now in Northern California, changing more lives. They are currently building a house as we speak. And I would also just like to kind of throw it to the folks at Sears, for the American Dream Campaign, who came through in a huge, huge way. When the producers originally gave us the tape about Sweet Alice and her family, we said, "Absolutely. We're on board. We want to get into this community. We want to do this neighborhood." When the producers really talked to the folks in the neighborhood, they said, "You know what? We need to do more. We want to do more." And Sears stepped up in a huge, huge way, and we are eternally grateful for that. So, I will throw it to the folks.
Thank you, Vicki. Let's honor and thank Sears American Dream Campaign. And how about Randy Blackburn, who's the District General Manager, coming up and receiving the plaque?
Well, thank you on behalf of Sears Quilt Making Company. It is wonderful to work for our company that is willing to give a hundred million back into our customers and our community. We were, actually, I think we got as much back out of it as, as we gave. We have several people here representing Sears today. Helen is representing a Sears volunteer group that helps painting fences, doing a lot of different things. John Nishani and Margaret Summers are here representing the Sears district staff. We've been a part of the L.A. community for over eighty years with stores throughout the area. And it is a wonderful honor for us to be able to give back and participate. And thanks for the recognition.
Thank you. And last but not least, I'd like to honor the production company, Endomall, and ask Lisa Higgins, the Senior Vice President of Production, to accept the plaque and introduce who's here from Endomall.
I'm not Lisa. Lisa had to leave.
Yeah, somebody's had to accept it.
I'll just say that it was a privilege for us to be there around the clock, seven days in Alice's neighborhood, and that it, we could not have done it without the Sears volunteers and with the help of the city. So, thank you very much. We, we were, it's a privilege for us to have been part of it.
Thanks. Do you want to say something, Helen? This woman was unbelievable out there with her friends, painting and doing all sorts of things.
I'd like you to know that if you want to know how to paint a wrought iron fence, I painted twenty of them. I painted the bottom half because I'm short. Somebody else painted the top half. But I enjoyed being on the street. I lived sixty years just four miles from Watts. So, I was very familiar with the area. And I have been over there since, and it still all looks beautiful. And I want to thank, I worked forty-three years for Sears, so I got some Sears retirees together. And that's why we went over and helped this wonderful lady. That's just a marvelous person. Thank you very much.
Thank you all again for coming in and really changing in the neighborhood. You really helped make my job a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. For our next presentation, we recognize Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand that we have a quorum issue coming up very shortly. So, I asked the members, I'll do this as quick as I can, but I asked nobody to leave because we do have ordinance, twelve vote ordinance coming up. David?
David.
I'm joined today by David Ruiz from the Greenview Nursery, also Juanita Manning, who's the Principal of the LORO Way School in Granada Hills, and Enrique Villasenor, who's the schoolteacher and administrator of the Habitat, which we built a couple of years ago. A few years ago, the city of Los Angeles vacated a easement that ran behind the school to build a Habitat, an environmentally Habitat. And this is a great addition to the L.A. Unified School District. The Habitat is the only nationally certified schoolyard Habitat in L.A. USD. It is certified by the National Wildlife Federation. David Ruiz from the Greenview Nursery got involved in LORO two years ago, when another nursery backed out. David Ruiz is, has donated hundreds of plants, trees, and shrubs, providing plant life for six different ecosystems, including a desert, valley, woodland, riparian, and wetlands are on the way. He will help the Habitat with projects of planting wildfire garden, a medicinal plant garden. He's provided thousands of dollars worth of plant life on a forty thousand square foot project, which is maintained by the students and the parents and the community of volunteers. I know Mr. Cardenas has been out there and seen as well. This is truly on Earth Day, something to be seen. And I invite anyone out there that wants to go out and see a real Habitat that's been preserved for our students of the L.A. Unified School District, to come on and take a look. It is a great addition to the community. And in particular, what David Ruiz has done and the Greenview Nursery to make sure that this Habitat expands and grows and provides an opportunity for our children in many years to future, to come see all the different plant life, bird life that's available in our city and our community. And we want to recognize David for his contribution to the LORO Way School, in particular, the Habitat that takes place, the ecosystem Habitat at the school site. And I want to present this to David for his dedication to the community and our children's future on Earth Day. Thank you so much. Wait a second. I understand Principal Manning would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. It really is a great honor to be before you today. And I thank you on behalf of LORO Way School's students and our parents and our community for helping to recognize the efforts of Mr. David Ruiz. He is truly a remarkable gentleman. He has made a significant investment in the education of our students and in our city. And he's such a special person. He's very, very unboled, but with a great, great heart for our school and for our city. And so, we want to say thank you. I'd like to bring Mr. Villasenor forward as a representative of our teaching staff to also say a few words.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you like Councilwoman Cardenas and Councilmember Smith, first of all, who have visited the Habitat, again, I want to reiterate Mrs. Manning's words of how much we appreciate Mr. Ruiz's contributions to the Habitat. It began with Councilmember Smith's efforts several years ago. It continues today, as I speak, with Nicole's help, Ms. Bernsen's help. We have the oak grove, and we're the only school in the L.A. Unified School District that has its own oak grove. That is being trimmed, and our future plans to build an amphitheater there so that students can perform and use that area. Many of our students come from many different parts of the city. We are truly a microcosm of this, of the city. And every ethnicity, we have over twenty-three ethnicities and languages spoken at our school. So, again, thank you to Mr. Ruiz, Councilmember Smith, Ms. Bernsen, for all their support. And we look forward to your continued support. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Just one more bit of, of recognition. I do not want to be remiss in thanking Councilman Smith for his efforts on behalf of our students and our entire community. He has really been so supportive of all of our efforts. So, we thank you so much, Councilman. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
My English is so poor, so I just want to say, I just want to say thank you very much. I visited the site myself. And I, I actually took a tour with some of the kids. I was just amazed at several things. One, how dedicated they were to the site. And secondly, how proud they were, and also how knowledgeable they were. So, I just want to say thank you very much for giving your personal resources to make sure that it was successful. You really touched the lives of these kids. And I was actually touched when I was there. I mean, these kids really took me around and were telling me what was going on and told me all kinds of things that I didn't think little kids that tall even knew or even cared about. But they do care. And because you were able to provide that forum for them, they could prove to the world that, hey, when you give us the resources, we can do some wonderful things. So, thank you very much.
I just want to say, my English is very poor, so I just want to say, thank you for this honor. Thank you very much. Can I say anything more in English?
As Mr. Smith has his picture taken there, let me recognize Councilmember Weiss for our next presentation.
All right.
Oh, God bless him.
Thank you.
Mr. Labons.
Okay, champs, come on up.
You have another one? Okay, no, no, go ahead, go ahead. Tom, let's, let's give Mr. Smith another minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, champs. We had some more. Ask Carrie Gaston from the Valley Quilt Makers Homemaker, and Pat Rosemary from San Fernando Valley Quilt Association. Pat, Carrie Gaston is the chairperson of the Valley Quilt Makers Guild. She got a call from Indigo Sportswear asking if they could take five pallets of Levi jeans that were damaged and use them. That's about five thousand five hundred jeans. Carrie and her quilt making friends looked at the possibility for a salvage project. To quote Carrie, quilters were the very first recyclers. We hate to see anything, especially fabric, go to waste. The volunteers took over a month to sort the jeans, find out how damaged they were, look at the sizes. Then they went out and sought out organizations to donate jeans to. They looked to volunteers to transport, wash, mend, store, and distribute the jeans to very, various groups with the assistance of their sister guild, the San Fernando Valley Quilt Association. They donated to the jeans to the better women's shelters, grandparents as parents, teenage prostitution rescue, homeless and needy families through Mend, Benai Brith, Family Resource Center, Police Activity League, California victims of the fires in San Bernardino and San Bernardino and Santiago Counties, Tierra del Sol, and wounded U.S. military troops. I want to thank Carrie Gaston, the Valley Quilt Makers Guild, the San Fernando Valley Quilt Association, for their efforts of providing a wonderful service to our community by repairing, distributing the jeans to the needy. And in a side benefit, they kept five pallets of land, stuff that would have normally gone to the landfills, out of the landfill. They provided a great assistance to people that really needed, and also did a great service to our community. And I want to thank and honor Carrie Gaston for her work, and also the Valley Quilt Makers Guild, as well as the San Fernando Valley Quilt Association. Thank you so much for what you've done, and we appreciate so much your dedication to the community. Thank you.
There are five more pallets ready to be picked up and worked on. And we've got a huge system of volunteers through the Southern California Council of Quilt Guilds. Our two quilt guilds, the Southern Calif, the Valley Quilt Makers Guild, and the San Fernando Valley Quilt Association have over five hundred members. So, we're looking at thousands of quilters in Southern California that are really helping. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let me recognize Councilmember Tom Labon, just as the picture is taken here.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome the C.I.F. champion, Marlboro Girls Basketball Team. Members, now you had to wait a long time this morning. They had to wait a long time for their championship rollback tape, Vic. Here we go. We got champions. You got the Lakers. You got everybody in town. And we got Fairfax. Jack, we had Fairfax last week. We're having a parade for Fairfax soon. But Marlboro School in Los Angeles, located third and Rosmar. These great student athletes are the champions of the Southern California Section Division Four. And I just wanted to bring them all down and salute them today as they are champions, because it's great to have champions. And they also have Barbara Wagner, who's their champion. I want to call, I used to call her head of school. I wanted to be politically correct. And I want head of school. So, please welcome Barbara Wagner, the head of school, Marlboro School, C.I.F. champion.
Hello. It's great to be here. And I'm very proud of the girls, obviously. I'm very proud of the school. We have been around for a hundred and fifteen years. You're laughing because he's onto sports again. Tom's been a great supporter of the school. And the eastern part of our campus is in Windsor Square. The western part of our campus is in Hancock Park. These girls, in the middle of the season, lost their coach. And we had an interim coaching staff. One of their coaches is here today, Kurt Schlinis, who is also the Chair of the Math Department. And I think he really embodies what these girls do. Every single one of our students go to college, go to highly competitive colleges in the country, all over the country. And he embodies the best, the kind of scholar athlete that these girls are. I'd love it if the girls could just introduce themselves and then, but I want to tell you that they, four years ago, had a zero and ten record. In the last four years, they have won league championships. The last two years, they won the state C.I.F. Southern Section Championship. In the last two years, they were state semifinalists. They're girls that have figured out how to overcome some adversity. They have not always had it the easiest with coaches turning over and so on and so forth. But they really function as a team. I'm enormously proud of them. I would like to introduce, to speak to you after the girls introduce themselves, Alex Chen, who has been recruited to play at Yale next year. So, when she graduates from Marlboro, she will be playing at Yale. First of all, let's have the girls introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Abby Alajuan, and I'm a sophomore, so class of two thousand six, and I'm center.
Hi, I'm Brittany Twang. I'm a freshman, class of two thousand seven, and I'm a forward.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Louis. I am a freshman as well, and I play point guard.
Hi, I'm Melissa Kim. I'm in ninth grade, class of two thousand seven, and I am a guard.
Hi, I'm Carrie Madison, junior, class of two thousand five, and I'm a junior. Oh, well, forward, my bad.
Junior forward.
Hi, I'm Emily Tay. I'm a junior, and I'm a point guard.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Ammon. I'm a sophomore, and I am a forward guard.
Hi, I'm Jaga Hera Lambis, and I'm a sophomore, and I play shooting guard.
Hi, I'm Alex Chen. I'm the only senior on the team, class of two thousand four, and I play forward. I'll be heading to Yale next year, as Ms. Wagner said. As she said before, when I first came to Marlboro, we weren't very good at basketball at all. Marlboro was basically known for its superior academics and volleyball, in fact. But since then, the Mustangs have won four consecutive Sunshine League titles, back-to-back C.I.F. Seventh Section Championships, and repeated as runners-up in the state regionals. The members of this team have contributed to that legacy and have added their own chapter. This year, the team has been ranked number twenty-one in the L.A. Times and surpassed all preseason expectations. Not many people know about the ins and outs of the basketball world, but if you associated with yourself with this team this year, I'm sure you would know about all the politics, the scandals, all the gossip that goes on.
Your team?
Yeah.
I didn't read it in the Large Mont Chronicle.
But to be honored by the city is truly to be recognized as a unifying force in the community. And this year, I want to recognize my teammates for their enduring fortitude and the tenacity of each individual member. I also want to thank Councilmember Labon for recognizing us, the City Council, and Ms. Wagner for allowing us to be here today. So, on behalf of everyone, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
We have brought each of you a gift that we hope you will take home with you in the purple bags. And also Kurt Schlinis, who is one of the coaches, thank you for demonstrating. Kurt Schlinis has a special presentation to make.
I'd like you to have this honorary jersey here. Wow, an honorary jersey. I like that. Honorary jersey. Let me try that. Can I just take a moment? I know Councilmen running into the next day. Why not?
All right, while you're trying that on, let me recognize Mr. Garcetti.
I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Labons, for bringing the team in and congratulating the team as well on, on the city championship. When I was in high school, a junior When I was in high school, junior high school, first player I was ever in was over at Marlboro. Went to the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade Marlboro prom, so I'm very proud of you guys. Way to go. You're all champions.
10th, 11th, and 12th grade. Oh, good job, Eric. You were all CIF and that. All right. Champions right here, Coach. Thank you. I'm very honored to wear this here, and Mr. Weiss and I are going to have a parade for Fairfax High School, their state champions. And we're going to get Truck 61 over on the neighborhood to carry the champions. I'll get Truck 29. I'll check with Chief Permatry, and we'll have all the champions off of Third Street in the neighborhood meet at Farmer's Market as we salute Marlboro High School for their wonderful CIF championship. Congratulations.
Ms. Han would like to join in. Ms. Han?
Thank you. I just wanted to subsume you, also stand and congratulate you. I always love it when we bring girls in here and honor them for all their accomplishments and their successes, and you never know where this is going to take you. Thirty-some years later, here I am as a councilwoman of Los Angeles, but I played basketball in high school. I played basketball before girls played full court, so that was a whole nother lifetime ago. However, I was a rover, and I played full court. There were only two people on the team that could cross the line. Very interesting game then. But congratulations. You will always remember your experience, not just on a championship team, but you will always remember your experience on a team that really, as you said, worked together to overcome obstacles, and you have learned lessons that will carry you far, far, far into your lives, no matter what you end up doing. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Ms. Han, Mr. Labonge. I believe that concludes our present, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith has one more. And again, if I can remind the council, we have 12 members, and we have two items that deal with ordinances, so if we could have all members of the council please stay to deal with the three items remaining. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. To cap off a very long morning of presentations, thank you. I appreciate this. I have before you today the five partners in an organization called Riverfront Stages, and Mr. Bedee, unfortunately, had to leave, want to be here, but not with us today is Tony Mayer. Also with us today is George Larson, Barry Larson, Wayne Morris, and Alex Reed. These are all professionals in the entertainment industry, and they noticed many years ago that we would traditionally spend up to three-quarters of a million dollars to build a set for a production of some sort or other, TV, movie, whatever. They'd strike the set, the stuff would be thrown away. First of all, it was a waste of resources for the movie industry, but more importantly, the stuff was going to landfills and being totally wasted. They put together an organization, a company, that now takes the sets, buys the sets, retains the sets, gets donations of the sets from the filming entity, whether it's movie, television, whatever. They keep the set and reuse the sets when they're available for other filming opportunities, which helps keep the industry here in Los Angeles, makes it more cost-efficient for them to stay here, and also, more importantly, again, it keeps the waste from going to landfills. And I want to commend them on this effort, for one, serving our communities, realizing the economic impact to the industry, and also realizing the environmental impact by wasting incentive to landfills. They truly were visionaries, and now they have a number of sets such as courtroom scenes and bars, et cetera, that are used over and over again by the industry at their stages. They've been very successful, and I want to honor them for their commitment to, one, the filming industry, which we have all said, we want to do everything we can to make the state here in Los Angeles. They've done that by helping us keep them here, and secondly, again, to help us keep the stuff out of the landfill. So, to all of you, I want to commend you, the City Council wants to commend you, for your forethought and for your concern about the industry as well as the environment. Thank you so much. And does someone want to speak for, a little bit about what your vision was?
On behalf of my partners at Riverfront, we'd like to thank the council and the city of Los Angeles for this honor, and we'll continue to do our part for the environment and keeping filming strong in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, members, I believe that now concludes our presentations. Let us return to the special item one on the special agenda, and I believe Mr. Deaton is able to clarify and resolve the matter. Mr. Deaton?
Recommend that you adopt items, all the items except items two, three, four, and five on the item number one. Approve other items and continue to three, four, and five for one week, and we can, in fact, why don't we continue until next Wednesday?
All right. There is recommendations to approve the recommendations one, six, seven, eight, nine today. Continue items two, three, four, and five until next Wednesday. Is there any objection to that? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. That is approved, and we will send the ordinance forthwith and visit this again Wednesday on the employee matters three, four, and five. We've also had a request then on the next remaining items, our 13 and 14 on the regular agenda, and let us call at this time item 14. And I believe Mr. Weiss will like to present that matter. There also is our number-
Well, I think it's exactly what you want to do. We've got some wonderful speakers, and let's proceed to public comment if we could.
All right, this is a required public hearing. Let me call the speakers on this matter, ask you to come forward, line up behind the podium, and then we will begin the council discussion. Let me call at this time Robert Donan, Robert Berger, Stephen Cortez, who will be followed by Chris Trong. Mr. Donan.
Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Robert Donan. I'm a longtime health and tobacco control advocate and voluntary chairman of the American Heart Association Tobacco Control Advocacy Task Force. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today, Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members, to request and urge your support on the Weiss motion and accompanying ordinance. I applaud and commend Councilman Weiss and his staff for his leadership, vision, commitment, and resolve as the maker of this motion, as well as you, Madam Chair, as a secondary person on the motion as well. I thank Councilmember and Chairman Tom Labonge and the members of Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging, and their respective staffs of this key committee, which has jurisdiction over health matters in the city, for their leadership, commitment, vision, courage, and resolve for bringing forward this item to you for action and adoption, an important waystation before reaching the mayor. Let me applaud the Tobacco Enforcement Unit, City Attorney, Department of Recreation and Parks, Police Department, Fire Department, lifeguards, and other key leaders and stakeholders and staff for your leadership, commitment, vision, courage, and resolve. Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members, the damaging health effects of smoking have been known for years. Until recently, there has been limited action to combat environmental effects of cigarette smoking on local beaches. You are all familiar with the numerous studies and arguments concerning secondhand smoke. Smoking in public beaches endangered children and others by exposing them to secondhand smoke. Centers for Disease Control estimates secondhand smoke causes 3,000 lung cancer deaths per year to United States adults non-smoking. Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members, there are major fiscal and budget challenges facing the city, which you are facing and grappling with. We are at major risk, a lot is at stake, and there are many choices and considerations in these uncertain times. I must point out and remind you, Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members, the city of Los Angeles is the city that receives master tobacco settlement money from the Master Tobacco Settlement Agreement, which, by the way, the American Heart Association was a lead organization from the beginning. Despite the city not having a health department, the budget contains no specific line items for dollars to be allocated and appropriated for tobacco-related illness and disease. Enforcement is a key provision, along with prevention and other strategies, which must be in place and working systematically, harmoniously, and in convergence to make an impact and difference. Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members, you have awesome responsibility, and I ask for your continued leadership, commitment, vision, courage, and resolve on allocating, appropriating funding, and maintaining tobacco control strategies, measures, and programs. The tobacco industry is strong and can divert resources to increase smokers and shift the direction and balance of the landscape in the blink of an eye. In closing, people are not born smokers. Smoking is a behavior. A behavior can be modified and re-stopped. There is no such thing as smokers' rights. It's material for talk radio, cyberspace conversation, and chat, and it's not based in fact a reality. Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members, please send a message to your constituents, citizens of Los Angeles, our children, and the world by following the lead of Santa Monica, where I happen to reside, and other cities by adopting the Weiss motion and the accompanying ordinance. The American Heart Association of Los Angeles County and its over 100,000 volunteers ask and urge your high vote. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm going to ask the rest of the speakers to try to be as concise as possible, because we have a large number of speakers. Mr. Berger?
Good morning. My name is Robert Berger. I'm chair of the Los Angeles County Smoke-Free Beach Task Force, but I'm here today as a resident of the fourth district and a single dad with two young daughters. A father, I'm a father that has had to move our family's beach blanket because we were downwind from smokers. A father that has panicked when I saw my young girl pick up a butt and put it in her mouth. A father that has done beach cleanups with my kids and picked up butt after toxic butt. To quote Philip Morris's own website, "Some people who would never dream of dumping garbage in a public place throw their cigarette litter on the ground without a second thought." Smokers do not view filters as litter. It's Philip Morris's website. Therefore, existing litter laws simply won't work to tackle this problem. And if you talk about people's rights, please remember the rights of the 84% of us who don't smoke. We have a right to clean air and a clean beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez, who will be followed by Chris Trong, Jim Walker, and Christine Arkell.
Members of the council, my name is Stephen Cortez. I'm the co-chair for the Los Angeles County Alcohol, Tobacco, and Other Drug Policy Coalition, a coalition that's been in existence for 16 years comprised of 80 entities to include both public and private community-based organizations, healthcare agencies, parent groups, youth groups, and church groups, and others. We are here to voice our concern and support on the issue of whether or not we should ban smoking on our Los Angeles public beaches. Los Angeles public beaches span a 13-mile stretch. They make up one of the largest ashtrays in L.A. and has become so throughout generations of negligence. We clearly understand that thousands of men, women, and children come and visit our beaches on a daily basis, and thousands of them are exposed to secondhand smoke and other environmental pollutants. We are concerned that if action is not taken today, that tomorrow, our beaches will continue to be an ashtray for many negligent smokers, and the number of secondhand smoke-related health problems will continue to rise. The coalition urges the council members to do what is just for the environment and for all the people that visit our city beaches. If you really want to promote the interest, safety, and well-being of the L.A. community from environmental and health hazards of tobacco, then you will support smoke-free beaches. We thank you for your time and consideration on this issue, and we look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Chris Trong, who will be followed by Jim Walker, Christine Arkell, Erica Sutherland.
Hi, I am here as representative of Surf Rider Foundation Malibu Chapter, and I'm here to present our position on banning smoking on L.A. city beaches. The Malibu Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation, which includes the L.A. city beaches of Cabrillo, Dockweiler, Venice, and Will Rogers, strongly urges the Los Angeles City Council to protect our right to breathe clean air and greatly decrease litter on our beaches by establishing smoke-free public beaches. The Malibu Chapter is dedicated to the protection and enjoyment of our beaches and waves from Biona Creek north to the L.A. county line. Our chapter strongly supports initiatives that will eliminate secondhand smoke and cigarette butt litter on the 37 miles of beaches within our chapter. Cigarette smoking on our beaches poses a serious threat to the health of beachgoers and our environment. Banning smoking will eliminate the dangers of secondhand smoke and protect the health of those who visit and cherish our beaches, as well as the creatures who live there. Secondhand smoke contains over 4,000 chemicals, 200 of which are classified as poisons, and 43 which are classified as carcinogens, including arsenic, ammonia, and cyanide. If someone were dumping arsenic into a storm drain or river, we would be outraged. We should address the poisons within secondhand smoke with the same outrage. Secondhand smoke is a Group A carcinogen, and there's no safe level of exposure. Furthermore, it is important to remember that smoking is not any more a constitutional right than having an open container of alcohol on the beach. Cigarette smoke is much more than an obnoxious annoyance. It causes death, cancer, heart disease, and asthma, and kills 53,000 nonsmokers in the U.S. every year. Each year, 4.5 trillion cigarette butts are littered. They are the most littered item in the world and the number-one type of litter recorded during beach cleanups. The butts that make their way into our beaches and into our oceans are unsightly disgusting and detract from the enjoyment of visiting.
Could I ask you to sum up? We have a number of other people who would like to speak.
Yes. I'd like to speak to you as a surfer and as a citizen of the city of Los Angeles and who frequents the city's beaches. I myself have run into many, many cigarette butts in our oceans, and I know that the chemicals that are dissolved in the water from these cigarette butts adversely affect my health. I myself have experienced health effects, rashes, and other things from the pollution from our beaches. Based on everything that I presented today, I strongly urge the city of Los Angeles to adopt this motion to ban smoking on L.A. city beaches. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to ask the city clerk to now set a time limit, so we'll have each speaker following only have two minutes. Mr. Walker, Christine Arkell, Erica Sutherland.
Honorable councilmembers, my name is Jim Walker. I'm the director of STAMP, Stop Tobacco Abuse and Minors Pronto. I come up from Santa Ana today to applaud your efforts to make our state beaches, our city beaches, our entire coastline more livable, more healthy, more beautiful. I'd like to address the issue of enforcement. The thing is, I would hope that you would put teeth in your ordinance so that it's meaningful, but at the same time, understand that it probably won't be necessary in the long term because people are compliant with doing the right thing. Think only a short time ago, when we had ordinances that suggested we're going to have smoke-free restaurants. I ask you, when was the last time you saw a slot team go into a restaurant? Okay? People are compliant, they will do it, even smokers who mostly want to quit. And I'd also ask you to remember about civil liberties and the fact that we all want to right to breathe healthy air. And basically, the fact is that smoking is an addiction. It's not an exercise of a right, it's a habit just as bad as discarding cigarettes, which has started not only numerous fires along Piers, but also in Southern California at the Grand Prix Farm just a few short months ago. It's a very sad habit that hopefully today we'll see measures taken to prevent it from happening on our beaches and turning our beaches into ashtrays. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Christine Arkell, Erica Sutherland, Irene Casper.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Christine Arkell. I'm with People's Community Organization for Reform and Empowerment, a nonprofit organization based here in downtown L.A. We're here with community members and community organizers from Los Angeles. As the tobacco industry continues to target poor urban communities of color, by utilizing People's Corps' community organizing approach, we raise the consciousness of our communities to see how issues affect them. Tobacco is a concern of our community, both an environmental issue and a health issue, which is why the community has come out here today in support of smoke-free beaches. We want to be able to go to the beach not having to worry about our families and children being exposed to secondhand smoke, which causes tens of thousands of deaths every year and is the third-leading cause of preventable deaths. It is harmful outdoors, especially to children, pregnant women, and the elderly. Tobacco litter continues to damage our coastline with cigarettes being the number-one source of beach litter. Tobacco litter releases toxic substances into the water and sediment and causes damage to marine life. We, the community, stand here today to applaud L.A. City Council for taking up this important issue, and we hope that soon our community can enjoy cleaner air and a more healthy environment and our L.A. city beaches. Thank you.
Irene Casper will be followed by Andrea Aguilar, Martin Barcera, Martinez, Francisca Caia, Leslie Mintz.
I'm Irene Casper. I'm a constituent in his honor Weiss's district, and I want to say to the whole city council to adopt his honor Weiss's motion and accompanying ordinance. I also want to say that I was impressed when her honor Perry first introduced, and I was in Arts Committee in Parks, not to smoke in parks, and I thought, how awesome to do that, and she did that, her honor Perry, and that started the ball rolling to go to the beaches, and I wish luck to his honor Weiss to get this passed. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Erica Sutherland. Thank you so much for hearing me today. I'm a UCLA student, and I live in Westwood, and I've participated in several beach cleanups. And for anyone who's been to the beach, you know that the number-one source of litter is cigarette butts. And one thing that really bothers me is that these filters, all the chemicals in them are leaching into the sand, and when they go in the water, they're also leaching into the water. And what that means is that the animals that live in the water, the animals that live on the sand, they're constantly exposed to these chemicals, and their homes become toxic. Another problem for the animals that live there is that they ingest the cigarette filters in the water, birds do, fish do, a lot of marine life does. At the end of the day, we can go home from the beach, and we don't have to see the cigarette butts anymore, but the animals there have nowhere to go. They live there, it's their environment. There's a lot of environmental problems that are hurting the land, that are hurting the animals, but this is one where there is a very simple solution. When you vote on whether to ban smoking, I hope you will consider the positive impacts that this ordinance will have on the environment and wildlife. Thank you.
Leslie Mintz from Healed Bay. We're here today to acknowledge the tremendous impact cigarettes in particular have on marine litter. You've heard others testify, it is the number-one source of litter for coastal cleanups nationwide, and as coordinator for over a decade for the L.A. County Coastal Cleanup Day, a year-round Adopt a Beach program, we can testify to the fact it is the number-one item found in cleanups locally for L.A. beaches. You've heard it's harmful to human life, it is also harmful to aquatic life. The cellulose acetate plastic in the butts takes over a decade and a half to degrade. There is a lot of research out there on how harmful plastics are to the marine environment. You've also heard testimony about the fact that there are toxic chemicals. I can tell you specifically that the chemicals released from one butt is lethal to water fleas at concentrations of one butt per two gallons of water. In sum, we support efforts to eliminate this incredible source of litter from our beaches. Thank you.
We have one more speaker in favor, and then we have a card from Mr. Richard Hall, who submitted a card in opposition.
Good afternoon. I am Francisca Caia, spokesperson for the American Lung Association of Los Angeles County. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. We, the American Lung Association of Los Angeles County, urge you to adopt the ordinance to prohibit smoking in L.A. beaches. How does this affect us? Smoking on the beach is a serious public health risk. Secondhand smoking is a Group A carcinogen, and there's no safe level of exposure. Secondhand smoke is the third-leading cause of preventable death, causing tens of thousands of deaths every year. The CDC warns secondhand smoking as a serious hazard to children and adults with asthma and other chronic diseases, pregnant women, and elderly. Children can also swallow or choke on cigarette butts discarded in the sand, and every year, the American Association of Poison Control receives 8,000 reports of potentially toxic exposure among children under age seven due to ingesting tobacco products. I would also like to say that no court has ever recognized smoking as a protected fundamental right, nor has any court ever found smokers to be a protected class. These are compelling evidence, reasons to support prohibiting smoking on beaches. Our health, our children's health, and the air we breathe deserves our protection because when you can't breathe, nothing else matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Final two speakers.
Good afternoon. My name is Martin Barrera Martinez, and I'm the legislative advocate for Southern California with the American Cancer Society. First of all, Madam Chair, I want to thank you for taking up this issue and initiating the motions, same with Member Weiss. As American Cancer Society, we feel this is an important issue as far as health is concerned. The only thing that I, because you've heard some great testimony, you've heard some impactful testimony, compelling testimony, I think that all I really want to say is that the American Cancer Society, we are for the legacy of health, and we would hope that this body would see that legacy of health as an opportunity. And the opportunity is to go ahead and pass this motion and make a strong statement that you're going to create a legacy of health long, far beyond all the rest of us and beyond for future generations. Thank you for taking this time, and thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker in opposition.
Good day, council. Can you hear me? My name is Richard Hall. I'm from Redondo Beach. I grew up in Mar Vista, West L.A. area, taught myself to swim in Mar Vista Park, which is one of those places that as a smoker, I can't enjoy anymore. I feel that we've taken enough of the rights to smokers away. Where can a smoker go to socialize with others, smokers and nonsmokers, than the open air of a public beach? You know, I can't go to bars, I can't go to school grounds, I can't go to Little League as many of yous mentioned, and you can't smoke at Little League parks and stuff now to watch my nephew and stuff play because I'm a smoker. I feel that you've taken enough of my rights away, and that I'm paying highly for my habit and lifestyle. Back in 1998, I paid $1.45 to $1.55 for a pack of cigarettes. R.J. Reynolds that I smoked from is not making any more profit on it, the government is, and I am now paying over $4 plus for a pack of cigarettes. I also would like to know where most of the money that over 36 states were allocated to spend towards the education of children has went since the majority of them are not spending even 10% to educate children on these issues. And another thing, it really upsets me that we always exploit children, we put the children to children. Sure, children should come first, I love children, but you know, our main problem with population is the main problem for the pollutions in this community. As I drove here to L.A. today and saw the pollution and the haze above the Los Angeles buildings and along our basin, I knew that it wasn't the 15% to 25%, 26% of the smokers that are creating this problem. And a lot of it has to do with overpopulation from illegal immigration to over-family sizes, people who are out there having five children when I'm a single white male. Obviously, it's going to use more of our natural resources than I will, and I feel that I have a right to go down that beach. You know, I've heard also that the beach is a place for exercise. The beach is public land for me to use in a legal, right, opportunity, whether it be to exercise, to go there for solace and peace, to be a part of Mother Nature, or to be a part of any of the socialism and society issues and things that are happening and going on there. And I don't want to go there and feel so out of place because the majority is so against me. And I really think that you should think about this and what's the right thing to do. How much more do you want to take from my lifestyle? Because I'm an adult and choose to smoke. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There was one more card submitted. Andrea, please go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Aguilar. I am a senior at Birmingham High School and a member of the Los Angeles Fire and Alive View Council, a youth leadership organization that deals with environmental prevention. As a young member of the community, I feel that it's important to express my concern about our environment. I frequently come to the L.A. beaches with my family, and I find people smoking and cigarette butts lying in the sand. I find this to be really harmful issue. Kids, teenagers, adults, and the elderly are exposed to secondhand smoke, which can be as dangerous as smoking the cigarette itself. As a member of the city, my duty is to provide a safe, smoke-free environment where people are free of danger. I don't want to grow up, I don't want to grow up in a community where they don't value the beauty and the safety of our beaches. I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to see our local beaches turn into an ashtray. Therefore, I encourage you to understand the relevance of this issue and vote yes for smoke, for smoke-free beaches. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing, and let me recognize Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to thank everybody who came here today and, you know, reflecting a real broad cross-section of our city. And, you know, just note in particular, it's a real privilege to have the support here of the American Heart Association, the American Lung Association, the American Cancer Society, folks from Surf Rider. You've heard about the problems of litter on the beach from the experts at Healed Bay. I want to thank my friend, the mayor of Santa Monica, Richard Blum, who couldn't be here today, all the advocates, all the kids who've spoken up today and before. And I do want to thank my colleague, Tom LeBlanc, for his courtesy, as we've been discussing this matter over the past several weeks. Cindy Misakowski, who was part of this body in one way or another, back in the day when all sorts of other smoking restrictions were first introduced, when the same arguments against it were made, which have been clearly overcome through the passage of time and not all that much time as well. And I also want to thank Matt Gallagher, who's worked so incredibly hard on this. Folks, today, we're going to take a very important step, which will continue the reputation, the well-earned reputation of this city as an environmental leader throughout the country. Our beaches are our most precious natural resource, and they are and ought to be our most pristine recreational resource. By banning smoking on the beaches, we will be taking an important step forward for the environment in Los Angeles and for the health of all Angelenos. The fellow who is pro-smoking mentioned Little League. Well, I got to tell you something about Little League. Tonight, I'm going to be going to watch my son play Little League, and thanks to Jan Perry, there's going to be a sign up in the bleachers at our Little League that says "Smoking is prohibited." I'm not going to see any smokers in the bleachers, and I'm not going to see any cops. You might find this very interesting. You know how many tickets have been written since Jan Perry's smoking, anti-smoking ordinance went into effect in the parks? None! Because, as Cindy Misakowski points out time and time again, these are largely self-enforcing laws. People want to be compliant with the law, and what we're doing here today is we're going to take an important step towards changing people's attitudes about where it is and ought to be socially acceptable to smoke. I passed out on your desk, and I'd like to have an extra minute if you don't mind, Madam President, as the presenter of this, a letter that we just received from California's preeminent anti-tobacco and pro-kids advocate, Rob Reiner, who has done so much to help turn the tide in this state against big tobacco and in favor of our kids' health and in favor of their early education. Rob Reiner has written to us, "As an advocate for our youngest children and their families, I believe that helping Americans to quit smoking is one of the most important things we can do to improve health. The more people we can help to quit, the fewer infants and young children will be exposed to the dangers of secondhand smoke, helping ensure that a new generation will grow up to be healthy, happy adults. Cigarettes have a devastating impact on the health of our families, communities, and our beach environment. Every year, the American Association of Poison Control Centers receives 8,000 reports of potentially toxic exposures among children under age seven due to ingesting tobacco products. We need to ensure that the places where our children live, learn, and play are free of smoke and the litter that cigarette butts leave behind. Sandy beaches should be safe children's playgrounds. Everyone is entitled to clean, healthy air and beaches. I commend the City of L.A. for its effort to become the largest city in the country to ban smoking along its beaches. Signed, Rob Reiner." Colleagues, I appreciate all of your support in taking this important environmental leadership step for the City of Los Angeles. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. LeBlanc.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you all for coming down today, and thank you for those who came to committee on this particular issue. It is a very important issue, and I do remember, Jack, as you complimented Cindy Misakowski, who was a great deputy then to Marvin Browdy, who started the movement with the first banning, if I'm correct, in supermarkets. You actually could smoke in elevators and supermarkets, you could smoke in there, and now they're just continually gone, and the work of Jan Perry and our parks is so important on this here. I have an amendment that I wanted to add to this, to ask that we have a working group. And the man from Redondo Beach, who used to live in Mar Vista, came and expressed his view. And it's true, we live in a society where there are a lot of pollutants in there, whether it's tobacco, whether it's our cars, whether it is the water that is in the gutter, whatever the case may be, there are concerns that we always must address. And the issue, as it faces our beaches, I don't like anyone who, and I'm leading the effort to improve the litter laws in this city, because I really don't like when anybody drops a piece of paper, a piece of trash, or drops a butt on a sidewalk. I want everybody to pick up their butts wherever they are, whether they're on a beach or whether they're at First and Main. It's real simple. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we have an awareness and a fairness, because there are people from all our community. And Jack, I don't know what lifeguard stand you hang out in, but if we go down to the lifeguard stands along the beach, we will have a group of people hang out there, and they kind of adopt that area, and I want them to respect the beach too. And I'm sure a majority of them will probably support this, but there may be some who don't. And we have to make sure we articulate that to make sure we don't have conflict on the beach. And I think it's important for those coastal districts, the 15th District and the 11th District, have a working group with all council, our neighborhood councils, all health organizations, Surf Rider, any environmental group, to come back together to talk, if there's an appropriate designation, to separate people. As the man from Redondo Beach, who used to live in Mar Vista, said, he has no place to go. And I don't want you to feel that you don't have no place to go in that, because some people need it. Now, this ban that we're proposing is on the sand only, so you could stand actually on the boardwalk of the beach and have a cigarette, and the sand could be right there, but we don't want to have conflict with people who say, oh, you can't smoke here, you can't. Because I have seen that in areas. We have grown, it's been maybe 20 years since you banned collectively throughout California, but not necessarily in all the country, smoking in restaurants, and there's sometimes people who are getting in arguments, and I don't want to see that, especially on the beach, because people's kind of got to go to the beach for a lot of different reasons. A lot of it is just to enjoy the water or just to be away from people in that sense, and they find that, and then all of a sudden, our beaches get so busy, they smoke on top of the man with the two kids who was offended that his young child picked up a butt, which should be picked up in the first place, because no butt should be left unattended, it should be found in the proper spot. Anyway, this is a amendment here that calls for that working group with the CLA that could look, if it is possible, and it may not be possible, Mr. Redondo Beach from Mar Vista. It may not be possible to find a place for you and others who smoke, but it'd be worthy of looking at the option to say if it's appropriate to find a place for all the tourists, for all the people from out, because the thing I really don't want, I don't want anyone to have to get in a fight on the beach, and there are fights on the beach, there's fights on the waves. Where's the Surf Rider representative? There's fights on the waves sometimes, who cuts off who on a wave? And there could be a fight on the beach if, say, hey, you shouldn't be smoking here, it's new law, and try to make sure that works out. I thank you, I think this helps. We move along, we support the smoking ban, but we have a working group that may come back with some recommendations that may make sense to deal with an issue. Because one thing we can't do, we can't ban all social habits that people have.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
I support this motion, and I thank you, Jack. This is truly a big-picture issue. It's a big picture, not only on our beaches, but it's a big picture about society in general when it comes to litter, when it comes to habits that affect other people. In this case, we're actually talking about the negative effects on many wildlife that people don't take into account, but when you stop and think about it, sure, you know, many birds, many animals out there will be choking on these cigarette butts, and that should not be the case. Certainly, we shouldn't allow it, especially since we're aware of that fact. I think it's only fitting that at this moment I introduce somebody who's in the chambers today from Sacramento, Christian Griffith, Senior Consultant. He actually handles health and human services issues, so if you'd please help me and welcome me, Christian Griffith. The reason why I mention that it's appropriate is because although some people might not think my habit of, I don't smoke, but if somebody were to say, my habit of smoking, how does it affect other people? It affects our health and human services by billions of dollars a year, unequivocal, unequivocal. If a person does not have insurance in the state of California and they get lung cancer or some other related disease, if they walk into a hospital somewhere in the state of California, they're going to be seen, they're going to be treated, they may even be operated on, they may run bills of hundreds of thousands of dollars to hopefully treat them successfully, and the bottom line is, that comes on the shoulders of the taxpayers. Whether we like it or not, that is in fact how this country is run, and thank God we do have that safety valve to make sure that everyone has at least a modicum of access to health, certainly if they are in dire need to see a doctor or they need some type of operation or what have you. That's the way it works. So if someone is affected by secondhand smoking, if someone is affected by smoking directly, and then they fall ill due to that, they have a place to go in this state. They will in effect have a burden on society somehow, some way. We should continue having that available to people, but at the same time, anytime that we can create awareness, anytime that we can curtail this in some fashion rather, anytime we can take responsibility that's within our purview, we should. And I think that's what this motion does. We have responsibility within our purview. These are beaches that are under the responsibility of the City of Los Angeles, and Jack Weiss, you're doing the right thing. I support it. This is a big-picture issue, not just what happens on the sand, this is much bigger than that. So thank you, and I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not a smoker, I've never been a smoker, and I understand the impact. And while the debate's been going on, I pulled up on the Internet PhilipMorris.com, which is now a tree of, they want to change the name, because they also involved in other marketable products. Surgeon General reported smoking and health. And back in 1962, through request of President Kennedy, Surgeon General office started looking into the impact of smoking, health issues, cigarette smoking and disease, addiction, quitting smoke, low-tar cigarettes, smoking in pregnancy, secondhand smoke, certain general reports. And I find this interesting, that Philip Morris USA agrees with the overwhelming medical and scientific consensus that cigarette smoking is addictive. Isn't that enlightening to all of us? It's addictive. Secondhand smoking, the impacts on individuals. I don't have any problem banning smoking altogether. And I know that recently, some of my colleagues and I traveled to another part of this world, and you go into a restaurant, people are smoking. You go into public transit, people are smoking. And everywhere you go, people are smoking, and you realize the impact. And it's a fresh air, as fresh as it can be in Los Angeles, that we breathe without the impact of secondhand smoking. What I look at is, coming from law enforcement, people's rights, liberties, and freedoms. And I don't want to take away people's liberties, rights, and freedoms, but when something is going to jeopardize me and everyone else with secondhand smoke, then it impacts the society as a whole. Now, when I go to Dodger Stadium, I see they have a little smoking pit. And when you go to some of the airports, they have a smoking pit. And I support what Councilmember Labonge has brought up in an amendment. Those people that want to smoke, those people that want to destroy their lives, don't destroy my life, and don't destroy your life. If they choose to smoke in their home, if they choose to smoke in their car, we have a policy, you don't smoke in city cars, you don't smoke in city buildings, you don't smoke at the entrance of public facilities. And I support all that, not being a smoker. But on the other side of the fence, when we have a country that says people can have their liberties and freedoms, I want to respect that also. So I support this working group to find out if we can have a smoking pit. We have fire pits. Let's have a smoking pit if those people want to smoke, but not impact all of us that go to the beach, that walk in the sand. And we know the impacts, the negative impacts on it. And I know that it affects the children, because a lot of youth go to the beach, a lot of youth go to our parks. Not being a smoker, it doesn't impact me to say, "I don't want it." But I still have some respect for those people who choose to have some freedoms. And I would support that amendment along the same lines as supporting Councilmember Weiss's motion on this. And when you have inconsistency in enforcement, where you have an ordinance in Santa Monica, where does Santa Monica stop? Where does the ocean stop in Santa Monica and begin in the city of Los Angeles? Where's it go then to Malibu? Where's it go then to Ventura County? Sometimes there may be some problems with enforcement. I don't want to take our law enforcement officers or our lifeguards to go out there and start citing people for this. We want voluntary compliance. But just as we get voluntary compliance in bars and cocktail lounges and movie theaters and everything else, we'll get voluntary compliance in those that want to flagrantly violate if enforcement has to take place. I think in L.A. City, it's the Fire Department that does that enforcement. So I support the amendment. My heart and soul with Barbara Bloomberg here, who was pounding on me to say, "Vote for this." I'm going to vote for this, Barbara. Barbara Bloomberg, the founder of the Los Angeles Mothers Against Driving. Many years ago, we worked together to combat that issue of people who drink and drive. And here you're combating this also. So my heart and soul are with you, my heart and soul with this, to clean up the air, to clean up the environment, and to clean up the beaches. We don't need butts on the beaches.
Thank you, Mr. ...
But. But. People who want to have that butth. Something about butts. Something who want to have that. The working group hopefully will establish something for those individuals. So, Jack, you got my support. I know you signed the amendment that Councilmember Labonge brought about, and I think we'll have a happy compromise with that. And I know you've got a guest here who's been waiting to go to lunch since 12 o'clock. It's now 1:15, so I think you should book dinner for him.
Mr. Zine, you're in and over.
I'm done. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Viergosse.
Yes, members, I want to, Madam President, members, want to acknowledge Jack and for his courage to bring this issue, an issue of first impression. An issue that initially, frankly, was ridiculed by some. And yet, I know that today this is going to be a unanimous resolution. A few years back, Mr. Cardenas and myself had to take on a similar issue, the issue of whether or not we smoke in restaurants. It was also a seminal issue, an issue of first impression. There were a lot of people that ridiculed California. And now, as you go across the nation, you see, as California went, the nation has come with us, or at least many of the states have nations. The idea, though, that this is just an environmental issue is something I want to dispel. Because as you heard, Mr. Weiss and others, this is also a public health issue. And our responsibility as a city to protect the public health, to protect the environment, to protect the beaches, which, when you think about Los Angeles and California, we know this great city because of those great beaches. The idea that we would make this be one of the first cities, maybe the first city to do this, indicates the leadership and the understanding that sometimes you have to make that first step. Sometimes you have to be willing to jump that divide. I congratulate my colleague for helping us do that.
Thank you, Mr. Viergosse. Mr. Garcetti.
I'd like to call the questions, please.
Is there any objection to calling the question at this time? Then we have before us...
Mr. Weiss, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. We have the motion by Mr. Weiss to approve the communication and the ordinance and the amendment, I think it's a friendly amendment by Mr. Labonge. So we have the matter before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen aye.
That is approved. We will send that forthwith to the mayor for signature. Thank you. What remains on the desk, Mr. Clerk?
Item 13 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, item 13.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, as we celebrate no smoking and no butts on the beach, we talk about safety. And this deals with our water supply. We know that we're concerned about the... Thank you, Jan Perry. We know we're concerned about security at the water facilities. And there's two reports, one for public safety, that was received and, are requested to receive and file. And the other report from Energy and Commerce, that we support that. And what this can provide out of Proposition 50, $50 million project for state, local, and regional water systems and protect them from terrorism and attacks. They have not established current guidelines, but Assembly Bill 107 by someone in Corbett is working to establish those guidelines and awarding the funds. And what this can provide to the city of Los Angeles is $17 million for security at our water facilities and another $500,000 for security at the Silver Lake Chlorination Station. The Department of Waters and Power supports this. And if we can receive some of those Prop 50 funds, the $50 million, it's appropriate for the statewide, the $17 million and the $500,000, that may have a positive impact on our constituents in not raising their water rates to provide security at our water facilities. So we would request that, receive and file the public safety report, and then we go with the Energy and Commerce. Thank you.
All right. We have the motion before us to adopt the Energy and Commerce Committee report. No one else wishes to speak. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen aye.
That is approved. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Now would be time for comments from the public on items not on today's council agenda.
All right. It is now public comment, period. Let me call forward at this time Eddie Ojanes Rumbos, Miguel Angel Perez, Elisa Padilla, Vincente Guara, Manuel Moreno, Theodore Solas, Victorina Tiguca, Nicholas Rodriguez, and Jesus Macias, Angel Lozama, all on the South Central Farmers. Please begin.
Municipal president, the council people. I'm going to identify myself as one kind of... Because we are, the ones that are here, we are farm workers. Female farm workers that are fighting to support us. Now, my name is Eddie Ojanes, I'm Mexican. I was born in the state of Guerrero. I've been working here since 1960. If you don't believe me, call the Social Security. The same thing. Call the office of the police to see if I'm lying. Why? Because my parents taught me to respect and work as a farm worker that we are. We want that the authorities, the way they are, to support us so that they don't destroy that land that we have cultivated with our lungs, with our work. And I show you my hands, that I'm not lying, sirs. That's why. We want your support as authorities that you are and these people, our farmers and female laborers. And they get the tools to cultivate the land. And that's all. Thank you.
Si, mi nombre es Francisca Bugarin. Soy miembro del jardín que está en Alameda, 41. Y yo vengo a pedir, por favor, que ese lugar ni lo intenten en quererlo mover o hacer bodegas, compañías. Porque ya estamos hasta arriba de esmo de puras aromas fuertes para nuestros hijos.
Strong smells from our children.
Lo que más necesitamos son jardines, más árboles, para que nos puedan ayudar a, este, tantas enfermedades que están saliendo y respirar tanta, tanta humo de las compañías. Nos estamos enfermando más. Así que, por favor, les pido que ese jardín se mantenga allí lo más que pueda. Incluso el lugar de quitarlo.
Instead of taking it away.
Poner algo más.
Put something else.
Por favor, se lo pido.
Please, I ask you.
Las personas que tienen esta posibilidad de ayudarnos. Se lo pido, por favor.
I ask you, please.
Que jamás muevan ese jardín, por favor.
Don't ever move that garden, please.
Que pongan más, por favor.
To put more, please.
Y yo he sido una voluntaria por años para la actividad y estoy para ayudar lo más que pueda a hacer lo que sea.
To do whatever.
Para poner más limpieza. Enseñar a nuestros compañeros a tener limpia la ciudad.
The city clean.
Todo. Porque esta, esta ciudad es llena de puro reciclaje de puras compañías donde pasas y...
Companies that you pass by and smells like...
A puro puerco.
Pig.
Está bien que vemos muchos mexicanos, muchos centroamericanos, pero somos humanos y necesitamos respirar algo más limpio. Así que, por favor, se lo suplico.
So please, I implore you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good afternoon again. Miguel Angel Perez, Los Angeles Land Use Coalition. I can speak on several multitude land issues. Number one, I'd like to start off. Like to commend and acknowledge Councilman Antonio Vierragosa on the land issues in Boyle Heights, close to my heart, the closing of bars and houses of ill repute that has a negative impact to the whole city of Los Angeles. I'd like to commend you again. It's very important that he is very responsive to the community, and the community's reached out, and he's responded very positively. And we continue to lend your support to you and to work with you together in the future. Second, there is a lady here, Irene Casner, that's going to raise some questions on land issues also with the old Examiner Building. And she has worked 50 years to give jobs and worked together within the industry here in Los Angeles, in the clothing industry, settling with the Museum of Fashion Designers, creators. She's going to be asking for support. Please, we implore you not to ignore this lady's plea for support to create this museum. It will create jobs for the whole city of Los Angeles, create a living wage jobs. Third, again, I was asked by the South Central Farmers, 41st and Alameda, to speak on the question of saving the farm, the question of what is happening with the land, question to save. To save, remember, what you eat every day, fruit, vegetables. These people are part of that, and you're part of consuming it. And to keep in your minds and your hearts what is happening, that we are here, and again, I want to state it. We are here, and we're not going to go away. Aquí estamos, y no nos vamos. Tierra y libertad. Gracias.
The final two speakers we have are Warren Williams and Irene Casner. Is Mr. Williams here? He's coming forward.
Thank you to the city council. We're very pleased that Sweet Alice was here earlier and that the discussion happened, as well as the ban on the smoking did take place. In reflection on that, that extreme makeover, we hold that government needs an extreme makeover. And part of extreme makeover to promote peace, healthy families, well-balanced children, and successful communities comes about doing things such as letting a reparations freedom flag wave at Lemur Park, which was asked. It also comes about doing things like having a Black Mothers Festival at Lemur Park that we ask that a proclamation can be made for that so it can take place on May the 9th at Lemur Park from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Peace and healthy families and well-balanced children comes about, Los Angeles proclaiming from May 3rd to May 9th International Mother's Celebration Week. Every mother does not have paternal instinct. And a lot of times, families are destroyed, but when agenda buys in the system, then a lot of times, children don't grow up with the respect of a mother. Yet many mothers are good mothers, therefore they should be honored. And we have an agenda on the 3rd of Monday, to honor moms as breadwinners. On the 4th, to honor mom as a home doctor dad. And everyone on their own should take their mother for a checkup on that day. And then on Wednesday, to honor mom as the cook and to take mom to dine, dad. And on Thursday, honor mom as a friend. Take mom on a walk at someplace that's a memory or something close to you. And on the 7th, on Friday, honor mom as a parent/teacher dad. Moms teaching their children not to smoke, not to use drugs. Being their first teacher is very important. And on Saturday the 8th, honor mom as coach. Take mom to exercise, but also coaching conflict resolution. And then on Sunday, honor mom as mother and as wife. Take mom to a festival, give her an award, and your special mother, even to those whose past, honor them with your own words, gifts, songs, and awards. This is something that everyone can do wherever they are. And again, for the black community, it's very important that we do that because we heard about the ugly mattresses that weren't fit to sleep on. We heard about how glad people were when the community was improved and changed. It also happens when a government responsibly...
Mr. Weiss, can I ask you something?
Yes, when government responsibly addresses the cause of a lot of violence and crime and not invest so much in things like a GSO and sending troops to war, but say, "Use those troops to improve the quality of life." Thank you.
Our final speaker, Ms. Casner.
I'm Irene Casner. I'm representing today the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. Also, I'm a manufacturer for 55 years, employing hundreds of thousands of people in downtown, number one employer. I want to read this into the minutes. Honorable Chair Cindy Misakowski and honorable council, the whole council member... Honorable Chair Cindy Smith Shikowski and honorable council, the whole council members. I'm here to talk about a very, very important thing that's happening to us in downtown. In nineteen ninety, the City of Los Angeles and the CIA and the mayor of downtown did a grand thing when they insisted and inspired Irene Casner family to save the Hearst Herald Examiner Building as a cultural monument. In nineteen ninety, Irene Casner took many visits to the Hearst lawyers and asked that this important structure not be destroyed, that donated to the City of Los Angeles, who in turn would donate the building to the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators. I don't know, I didn't mention that the Hearst Corporation at that time applied for the demolition of the building.
Ms. Casner, if I could ask you to sum up, we all received your letter as on our desk, so you don't have to read the whole thing into the record. Just please sum up.
I was going to just sum it up, okay? I need your help to, we can only save the Hearst Examiner Building as a jewel in our crown and our flag, and it is the home for the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators as it is dedicated in the Los Angeles in nineteen ninety and voted in city council in the strategic plan of downtown. Please make a difference in history. Be responsible and celebrated as the founders, all of you, of the Museum of Fashion Designers and Creators and the former Hearst Examiner Building. Our fashion industry is watching, waiting independent upon your honors to do that because it will be for the second time, for the second time saved because they told me on the phone that they are going to do, I'm speechless, they are going to do apartments out of the building, they'll probably demolish it, and if not, they will deface it. So please, I depend upon all of you. And I want to go all the way to his, to the governor, Schratzenberger, and everybody else to make sure that this building is safe and the honor is kept to put it, put the museum in there who will guarantee the jobs, preserve the jobs, market Los Angeles, and it will be a wonderful monument to the city of L.A., the past president and figure of the fashion industry, number one employer. Thank you very much for listening.
The public hearing is now closed. Mr. Clerk, what remains on the desk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Carden has requested to be excused to leave at noon on Friday, May seventh, for city business meets council policy.
Mr. Carden is excused?
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused to arrive at ten forty-five on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, and at ten thirty on Friday, May twenty-first, for city business meets council policy.
Mr. Zine can come late those two days?
The desk is clear.
All right. Are there any announcements, members? Mr. Laban?
Thank you very much, members. Tomorrow in Griffith Park will be the Walk America March of Dimes for not just our own employees, but employees of companies throughout Southern California will walk for the March of Dimes for healthy babies. And also, a great cookbook was prepared as a volunteer effort for the March of Dimes by our own employees. And I just wanted to recognize everyone that go to the Griffith Park tomorrow if they want to get in a great walk. I will not be able to attend tomorrow because on Saturday I'll be representing all of you and the mayor in Manzanar as we have the thirty-fifth trek back to Manzanar and in the dedication of the Manzanar National Center. As you know, the story of Manzanar with the relocation of Japanese-Americans right here from our own City of Los Angeles into Owens Valley and that dark chapter of our history. But tomorrow, together with veterans, our own veterans of World War, and also veterans who served in four hundred and forty seconds and other units, Japanese-American units, will be there to celebrate this great new center which was built on land owned by the City of Los Angeles. Those are two announces of very important events. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Skrul.
I also have two events I'd like to mention in my district tomorrow. One is the Shouting Coyote Poetry Festival at Tierra del Sol from ten AM to, I think it is six PM tomorrow in my district in the San Lantanga area. Also, another event that's going to be, it's called Walk a Mile in Her Shoes at Galleria starts at twelve noon, and it is to benefit the Valley Trauma Center and Rape Center, the only one in the San Fernando Valley. So I encourage people to come out and support both of those events. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several events for the Eighth District on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, the L.A. Bridges Program, the prevention aspect of it will have a piece in the Street Power Rally. The rally starts at nine o'clock. And the program goes from ten thirty to one PM, and this will be in Limer Park. Also, the One Hundred and Eighth Street Hoover Neighborhood Association will be having their annual meeting, starts at ten o'clock to six PM. It's on Hoover between one hundred and fifth and one hundred and seventh. And then the Wreckon Park, Department of Wreckon Park will have an open house at the Epic Center at one o'clock, and that's in Exposition Park. Also, on the twenty-fourth, from ten to three, ten AM to three PM, the Blooming of the Roses Festival will also be at the Exposition Park. Epic Center is the fourth annual Blooming of the Roses. And then finally, on seven thirty on Sunday, the twenty-fifth, Nike will put on their second annual Run Hit Wonder, which is a five and ten K run. This will bring about twenty thousand people to the community and raise several thousand dollars for youth programs in South Los Angeles. And that starts at seven AM program, and the run will commence right after the program.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. The Center for Asian Americans United for Self-Power and Cause will have their Asian Pacific American Heritage Month kickoff. A little early, but for me, tonight is their eleventh annual dinner, going to celebrate that month commemorating Asian Pacific American Heritage Month.
Thank you. Are there any adjourning tributes, members? I know Mr. Zine, I'm going to recognize today for the first adjourning tribute. Could I ask everyone to please stand for adjourning tributes today? Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this will be from all council members. It's the California Highway Patrol Officer, Officer Thomas Steiner, passed away April twenty-first. California Highway Patrol Officer Thomas J. Steiner, thirty-five years of age, a five-year veteran of the California Highway Patrol, was shot and killed in front of Pomona Courthouse moments after he testified in traffic violation cases. Officer Steiner was struck repeatedly and suffered a fatal wound to the head. Was a nineteen ninety-nine Highway Patrol Academy graduate and father of two who lived in Long Beach. Officer Steiner worked out of the Santa Fe Springs Highway Patrol Facility for one and a half years. Officer Steiner was responsible for ticketing speeding trucks in eastern Los Angeles County. As a teenager, Officer Steiner moved to Long Beach where he graduated from Robert A. Milliken High School in nineteen eighty-seven, earned a degree in Business Administration from Cal Poly Pomona in nineteen ninety-seven, and graduated from the Highway Patrol Academy two years later. He is greatly missed by his family and friends, survived by a wife, a three-year-old son, and a thirteen-year-old stepson. May California Highway Patrol Officer Thomas Steiner rest in peace.
That will be all, members. Ms. Skrul?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Dave Ryan. Dave passed away actually on April seventh, two thousand and four, after a valiant fight with cancer. Dave was a wonderful presence in my San Lantanga community. He led the American Legion efforts there, an event such as the Memorial Day ceremonies and a very special observance of nine eleven. He served in the Navy and was also a POW. He unfortunately was diagnosed with cancer some months ago, and we have had a few tributes in my district to acknowledge his many, many, many contributions, his stick-to-it-iveness, his commitment to honoring the men and women who have served in our military. And he is survived by his wife, Moa, and other relatives as well. Thank you.
Mr. Laban?
Members, I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Sister Ruth Kent, who lived to be ninety-two years old. She was honored a couple of years ago right here in this chamber. She was a very beautiful woman who was born in Iowa and came out to California. She graduated from a MacLauchlan College and earned a BA and a teaching credential in library science. She taught for several Catholic schools throughout Southern California and was very prominent in her community, was a librarian, and years later at a MacLauchlan College. She also, for fourteen years, was a volunteer at the Braille Institute at Melrose and Vermont. And one of my greatest days is I was driving down Las Feliz one day, and she was there, she would walk from their little convent up on Waverly down to catch the bus on Las Feliz, and I was there at the right time to turn around and make a illegal U-turn, Officer Zine. But I did it safely, unfortunately, fortunately. And I picked up Sister Ruth and reacquainted because she educated some of my brothers like forty years ago when she was at one of the schools that she taught. And she was a very inspiring woman who also, and many of us know, there's very few people left who actually write longhand letters to you to thank you for little things that you do. I had an opportunity to tour Congresswoman Diane Watson through the district. It took her to the old Earl C. Anthony Estate, which is now the Waverly House where these nuns live, where Sister Ruth lived. And they got to meet and acquaint themselves with her. Her funeral mass is tomorrow at eleven o'clock at Mother Good Council on Vermont in Las Feliz. Sister Ruth Kent, a true angel in the City of Angels.
Thank you, Mr. Laban.
And also, members, a story that I just learned of, although it was on the radio, was a great American, Pat Tillman, passed away. He was in his prime of his career with the Arizona Cardinals as a football player, a very tough safety who was known to be a great football player. But four years as a veteran, he was called in his own. He gave up his professional career and joined the United States Army and served as an Army Ranger. He died at a mission in southeast Afghanistan. He was twenty-seven years old. He was a member of the Seventy-Fifth Ranger Regiment, an elite light infantry group out of Fort Benning, Georgia. He died in a firefight with anti-coalition militia forces about twenty-five miles southwest of the U.S. Military Base in Coast, which is an area of frequent attacks. Two U.S. Soldiers were also wounded in that attack. In his four years with the Cardinals, he was an outstanding football player, as I mentioned. And he also had a West Coast Alliance because he was a member of the Pac-10 at Arizona State where in nineteen ninety-seven he was the Pac-10 Defensive Player of the Year and set a record of tackles, which is a very achievable goal as a defensive player for the Sun Devils. He also carried a three-point-eight-four grade point average throughout his college career and graduated with three and a half years degree, three and a half years in academic years, so the degree in marketing. His brother and everyone in his community is truly devastated, and I'm sure all Americans, because it was a true story of someone, because years ago, we forget that professional athletes got drafted to, not, and there's a football draft this weekend, but they got drafted into service sometimes in the, right after college or during their professional play. This person, this great person, entered the Army on his own volunteer, Pat Tillman, and tragically lost his life in defense of United States causes in Afghanistan. Pat Tillman.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask that we adjourn and honor Ms. Bertice Miles, who passed away on Tuesday, April thirteenth. She's a longtime resident of Limer Park, retired teacher with L.A. Unified School District and a member of the First AME Church. She was honored by her family at her funeral services at Angela's Funeral Home on Tuesday, April twentieth. She survived by her daughter, Shalone Deche.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask council adjourners in the name of Louis Calamine, who is the brother of Larry Calamine, the executive director of LaFCO. I think all of us are dealing with Mr. Calamine. He was eighty-three years old, he was his older brother. He's a retired federal agent with the U.S. Department of Justice, and he passed away just a few days ago at age eighty-three as a father, grandfather, and great-grandfather.
Thank you. And I would like to ask the council to adjourn in the memory of Daphna and Louis Padula, Palisadeian residents for many years who were hit and killed tragically together as they were crossing Temusco Canyon Road going to Theater Palisades. They were a beautiful couple who enjoyed the Theater Palisades, were doing this Friday, April second, hit by an eighteen-year-old driver who admits that he looked down, looked away, and hit the two of them who were hand in hand and arm in arm, as they were always known in that community, and both were killed instantly. They are survived by their daughter Cindy Smith and her husband Neil, and their daughter Lisa Visca and her husband Dennis, as well as three grandchildren. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. We adjourned.